Thank you. Good evening. Welcome to tonight's meeting. For the record, we have with us are also our Township Manager, William Browton, our Clerk, Jamie Avalina, our Township Attorney, Stanley Turrets. The next televised Council meeting will take place on Tuesday, March 18th, with legal opening to begin at 7:00 PM and public input to begin at 8:00 PM. The Affordable Care Act Information Seminar will take place on Saturday, March 15, 2014, at 11:00 AM, and on March 19, 2014, at 7:00 PM at Teaneck High School. Additional information regarding this topic may be located on our website. First item on tonight's agenda is our presentation of the billboards. We have with us from CBS Outdoor, Thomas Colombo and Lou Darmenio, who will be giving Council some information on billboards. It's not open up to the public, it's just for Council information purposes. So Lou, Tom?
Lou Darmenio, Price Meacham and Darmenio for CBS Outdoor. As you may know, CBS is a part of the Columbia Broadcasting System. It's the largest outdoor company in New Jersey, one of the largest in the company. We've been asked to give some information to the Council about the range of potential income from a billboard sign. I have with me today, Tom Colombo. Tom's the lease representative with CBS. He's going to tell a little bit about himself and then provide the Council with the requested information. Tom?
Mayor, Council. Tom Colombo, CBS Outdoor. Been with the company for five years. My background is real estate in the residential and commercial development for the last 30 years, last five years with CBS Outdoor. My role with CBS Outdoor is, for the most part, lease negotiations and seeking out suitable land parcels for billboard development. We believe that the Route 4 location has the potential, over a period of 20 years, potential to the town of $2 to $5 million in revenue. And that's based on the location of the sign, that would be based on a back-to-back digital billboard, bulletin digital billboard, the height of the sign, the view of the sign, and also economic conditions. Thank you.
Can you have that number again?
Between $2 and $5 million over a 20-year period.
And the variables are the height, what else was it?
It would be depending on back-to-back digital billboard, bulletin billboard, the location of the sign, the site, the height of the sign, the view of the sign, and then also economic conditions.
And the height is based on the visibility of the sign, whether it includes the sufficient height to be able to get truck traffic in there.
Dr. Fu, can you just speak a little more? What are like, and forgive me for not knowing anything about billboards other than, you know, where they are, but who are like the highest-paid advertisers? Or is it by-the-site location? Or is it like car companies pay more for their billboards? Or is it like internet companies pay more for their billboard? How does that work?
In terms of the advertisers, I really...
Just answer the mic if you can't say...
That would be more the sales department, but more typically...
Sure. More typically, it would be, you know, national advertisers. But sometimes, you know, a local company will, you know, capture a sign and if they're nearby, you really can't tell.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, well, I just have one more question, and then I'll get it over to you. And where are we basing this $2 to $5 million? It's a pretty big range, so how do we come up with that number?
We could say, I mean, it's based on our experience with other sites in the general area. And it's based on, you know, the factors that Tom had indicated, the economic conditions, the visibility of the sign. But it's a Route 4 sign, so it should be, if it is a Route 4 sign.
Does CBS Outdoor have anything on Route 4 right now?
That we do have a couple of locations, Hackensack and Englewood.
You do the holy name sign? On Hackensack? Is that on Township, Hackensack land? What property is that on?
It's New Jersey Transit land.
So it's public information? Can I ask what type of revenue they generate for that holy name sign?
I really, I have liberty to say, but it is public information. Yeah, if we can request that information, but...
We did request.
Yeah, the fact that you're not at liberty to say about something that is public record is kind of disingenuous. But we were just told to give you a range, and that's what we're going to do.
No, no, I understand the range is an estimate for the sign in Teaneck, but for the actual sign?
Hackensack?
Hackensack. That would be public record?
Well, we, all I was indicating, I mean, we're going to be bidding on this location as well, so, I mean, you can get an idea of various public records.
It would very much help us if we had something real.
I don't think we're going to get that from, I mean, Teaneck. Did we, we requested that, Mr. Browton?
I'll get that. Is anybody else, are there any questions?
Some general questions as far as content, you know, is it check cashing places and bail bondsman and gentleman's clubs? Do, you know, as far as the, the character or nature of content, the appropriateness of who the advertisers are, how does, are there limits that are set on that or guidelines? How does that get addressed? CBS has been, my experience with CBS is that it is responsive to municipalities, especially with regard to public locations. There are certain standards. And I believe New Jersey Transit actually has some printed standards that you could, that you could look at, that's in the regulations. I could provide that to Mr. Turrets.
That'd be great.
You should know that this is an item that is bid, and the specifications are specifications that the Council has to approve, and content obviously will be one of those issues within constitutional parameters. But as a public body, that could, that's not taken care of by CBS.
And minimum bid, correct, Mr. Turrets?
In our bid specifications, we can put down minimum bid. Right, which has nothing, which has nothing.
No, it has nothing to do with them, but...
Correct.
Say a couple of things. The billboard idea is not a particularly popular idea in Teaneck. So in order for us to make the best decision, we have to have the best information. My question is, how do you, how do you change the content on a digital billboard? Who does that?
Well, I could provide that time when you want me to. Digital signs are actually governed by the state of New Jersey. They are, there's regulations, and I could provide them to Stanley as well. They have to turn no quicker than every eight seconds, they have to be static for eight seconds. Typically, they're sold in eight terms, it was in a 64-second, they use a 64-second minute, and they're sold eight terms. In terms of who, how it gets controlled, most of the companies have a central control, and the copy is put at this central control and then provided throughout the country. A company could buy a location, let's say it's a new movie, and then, you know, with the flick of a switch, they could identify ahead of time the various locations, and then that, that message will be up throughout the country. Or, you know, there could be a game that's on, and a flick of a switch, they could say, you know, the Yankee game tonight against the Rangers. It's a very flexible medium in that way, and it's done through the, through the internet in terms of making those connections. And again, most, most companies have an essential location.
What, what exactly?
Do you, do you do? What piece of this process does your company do?
Me personally?
No, you represent...
Yeah, CBS.
Through it. These people are potential bidders on the project. They're a public company, and they will be bidding against other companies. The only purpose they came tonight was to give you an, to give a public declaration as to what they felt in their opinion were the parameters of the dollars involved. They are not prepared to discuss any of their workings because they are potentially going to bid, and as they explained to me, they are not going to get into their operations.
Yeah, I think, I think one of the, one of the, you know, sort of threshold questions that we have been discussing was, hey, if this is going to give us $10,000 a year in revenue, I don't know that anyone's interested in it. If it was going to give us $1 million a year in revenue, well, maybe that's worth a real close look. So I think, you know, if we, if we look at it and we say, hey, the, the good faith estimate is that this may be worth between $2 and $5 million over 20 years. So we look at 300, $400,000 a year as an estimate, maybe that makes sense, maybe it doesn't. But at least that gives us that threshold question of knowing what ballpark we're in as we, you know, if we, if we decide to pursue the bidding process.
As in any item that's bid, you won't know until you bid.
Yeah. But this is, this is doing a little, a little pre-bid shopping to see what...
I'm not smart enough to understand what you guys are talking about. My question is, do you physically build the billboard, or do you sell the advertisement? What part do you play?
CBS owns and operates the billboards. They build them.
The physical billboard, okay.
Does anybody have any other questions?
Yeah, I have a question. In terms of content, once the billboard has been authorized by the township and should, and if the billboard is authorized by the township, and after a bid is awarded, in terms of content, how and when is the township notified as to what's displayed? Like you just described, you know, you can change things with the blink of a switch. Are we aware of that when you're, when you're doing it, or is it just something that's done randomly?
Well, I mean, I, again, I would have to be guided, I guess we'd be guided by the bid documents, but typically...
Is that a stipulation that you could put in?
It's a stipulation that could be put in, but I think as a practical matter, you could control general content, but I don't think you're going to get any bidder if you say each ad, every time it goes up, has to be shown to some committee first. It's just not going to practically work that way. You have, you will have general specs dealing with contents for a public body as to what's acceptable, and the contract with the, with the potential SE will, will be a contract like everything else. And, you know, you won't, you won't be picking and seeing each one before it goes up on the screen. I can't see that happening.
Yeah, but as a practical matter, I will provide you with New Jersey Transit's guidelines, and maybe that would be a system.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Because I think that one of the germane questions that they've come to, that we wanted, was the revenue numbers, and I think we've got those revenue numbers. I think from our standpoint, we have a bunch of work to look at from ourselves, looking at different municipalities, getting the NJ Transit guidelines, as well as getting what the bids and finding out what they're paying for, you know, two miles down the road, and just to move on because we have a budget discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
If you could just answer that question, then that's...
Yeah, let me, let me go one more, one more question.
Yeah, just, if you recall, we had, we, the planning board discussed this.
Just one more.
The planning board discussed this on Thursday evening, and over a day or two afterwards, there appeared in the media some numbers of $2 million for a period of 20 years. I'm not sure where they got those numbers, but, so you're saying the only thing you can give us at this point is a range of $2 to $5 million over 20 years, for the moment?
That's for the moment, right.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions, Mr. Mayor?
Question. All right, you're, you're trying to get the, the option to build the billboard, I got that part. How do you determine who gets to put the advertisements on there?
There's a sales department, and the company has a sales department. Many companies do, some companies operate with outside sales agents. There's, there's various ways of operating. CBS is a large company, they have their own sales departments, and they reach out.
Thank you very much for coming in.
Okay.
Okay, the next item on tonight's agenda is old business. We have a 2014 municipal budget and a capital budget. Mr. Brown?
Okay, I re-listed these items. At our previous meeting, I had given a summary of our previous budget meetings, beginning on January 9th. Council had also requested numerous items, including salary breakage in the police department for 2013, police department overtime, police department vehicle fleet inventory, crime statistics, fire department response time impact, 2013 fire department calls for service to FDU, county A-Ramps installations, cost specifications on old police headquarters renovation, overtime analysis for 2008 to 13 for police-fire DPW, 2013 road resurfacing expenditures, 2014 debt service paydown schedule, breakdown of current debt, building department penalty assessment report. Council also requested information on smokes, snow removal expenses, 2013, 14. We have discussion of GIF rejections, provide the Council with that information. Also, Council requested information on the number of Oprah requests for 2012, 2013. The clerk is providing that. Council also requested recommendations on shared services opportunities. That document I still have to provide to Council, and preliminary revenue numbers, which I provided to the Council.
William, for the overtime analysis, I think I specifically asked for all the departments, because my comment was I never remembered all these departments having an overtime cushion. And I think you only have these, these three departments. Do you have all the departments?
I provided the, I provided the departments with the largest numbers. The major portion of the overtime is from police-fire DPW.
Historically, has, like in 2008, did all the departments have overtime cushion like it has now?
All the departments, recreation department has overtime, their overtime's about $18,000 this year.
My question is, you showed a historical from police-fire DPW, but in the budget, you put police-fire, DPW, recreation, health, maybe court, library, or whatever else. Can you give the historicals for all the departments?
I can give the historicals for all the departments.
Going back to 2008?
I, I guess.
Okay, if that's okay, that's what I would like to see.
Let me go through my questions, all of them at one time, although they're all over the place, so let's start easy. The, the police department vehicles. You have a list of vehicles here, and only three of them have gone 100,000 miles. Is there a policy that we don't retire a vehicle on lease until it gets to be 100,000? Or what is the feeling about that?
This is, this was our, this is our policy and our replacement plan. We replace six vehicles per year. That's been our plan since I've been here for the past five years. Prior to me coming here, several years ago, they used to replace 12 vehicles a year. The patrol vehicles used to get replaced, all of the patrol vehicles. We moved that down to six, where we replace six vehicles per year. So that would, that, that, we had a discussion about this last year. So that gives us, the oldest vehicle in the fleet's about four or five years old?
Okay. Yeah, but that's not, that's not a patrol car. 2003 is a special use vehicle.
All right, Chief, would you just come up? Yeah.
Yeah, let me, let me finish the questions. So the, the average mileage on these vehicles that are listed here is in the $50,000, $50,000 mile category. There are only three cars, well, three vehicles that are over 100,000.
Yeah, but I think you're...
And with police cars that are out there all the time, and I assume we get excellent maintenance, shouldn't they be expected to last a little longer in terms of mileage?
No, these, these vehicles are being driven three times as hard as a normal vehicle. So these vehicles are being driven 24 hours, seven days a week, at 50,000 miles. These vehicles are in, in pretty tough shape at 50,000 miles. Chief, if you could, just explain a little bit about our, our replacement schedule.
Sure, just to address what Councilman Fu said, you know, one of the things is that an average vehicle operates about 120 miles a day. A patrol vehicle goes about 120 miles within, within a day. But it's running between 22 and 24 hours at that time. It's just idling the whole time, whether it's running, or just sitting in it, observing something, patrolling, stopping somewhere on a construction detail, and that's something that's not considered in the mileage, and that's, that's a significant wear factor on the vehicle. When a vehicle gets to 100,000 miles, it's basically a planter, I mean, for all intents and purposes. The front end is shot on, it's an unsafe vehicle, it's only used for, for a traffic control detail, we use it very rarely, or parking, of course, it's something that's not used for a high-speed type vehicle where you may have to get involved in a pursuit or something, and it's certainly not a safe vehicle. With six vehicles, if you look, you have the statistical breakdown with your vehicles' to mileage, and you gave it 200... The six highest vehicles in the fleet, you know, range from 94,000 up to 111,900 miles. And what, generally what we do is, when we get six new vehicles, we kind of push things down, and they kind of fall off the grid, and they go either to someone else that might be able to get a little bit more use out of it, or we sell them through auction. And that's the advantage of having the six new cars. And we usually try to put the six new cars into the most advantageous positions, which is patrols, so they always have the most reliable fleet, so that when they go out, it starts up, it runs, and it's safe, and it's the best vehicle we can possibly get. Also, within the vehicles that we're trying to get, as we know from this winter, which is one of our most historically bad ones in recent decade or so, is to get vehicles with four-wheel drive. And that's one of the things, if you look at the vehicles we were specing out, four of them, excuse me, yeah, four of them are with all-wheel drive. So that, that's one of our goals, to get enough of them in the fleet, because we haven't been able to use, we can't use chains on cars like we did 30 years ago when I started, and that, that stuff doesn't work anymore. So we have to have all-wheel drive vehicles, so I think it's a prudent move.
Okay, another category, the capital budget, the new police station, or the old, the old new police station. On that page where you talk about the $400,000 shortfall, looking at that chart, we only account for $315,000 out of 400. And my question is, why do we show anybody the $85,000 contingency fund that's not allocated to any, any particular project? So we should only be talking about $315,000 rather than 400. The other item is, under the asbestos abatement, there's no asbestos in the old building. The only asbestos that they may find is when they open up the, the doorways into this building from the old building. And is that going to cost us $30,000?
Well, the asbestos is in the windows. The asbestos is in the, the window frames.
In the what?
In the window frames. When they go to attach the buildings to one another, there's windows that run all along that side of the building. So there's asbestos in those window frames, and that asbestos needs to be abated.
But if it's not, if it's not exposed, it doesn't have to be dealt with? Only when you open the hole do you have to deal with it, as far as I understand. You don't have to do the whole wall because you got two openings for the other.
Yeah, you have to, those openings have to be closed up. They're windows. Those windows are going to have to come out, and that area is going to be sealed.
I understand that, but I'm saying that costs $30,000.
What I think he's saying is that he can encapsulate it, so if you can give us that option of encapsulating it, I think what he's saying is there, there is some merit to that, that we can look at encapsulating that area.
A way of not spending that much money if we don't have to. The other thing is that we have a list of numbers on that page, but there's no detail in terms of what it's going to really buy. It says voice data cabling switch, $90,000, but, but there's no, no document that says that's what it would cost, or there's no, no descriptions of what that is.
Or product comparison.
Yeah, there's no, do we do any, any shopping for these things, or is this just a, a number out of the sky?
No, it's not, it's not a number out of the sky. It's a, it's a, it's a project that's in, in, it's in progress. Part of it is that we were trying to get these items on state contracts so we can get the best price. At the last council meeting, Council approved a resolution allowing us to join a co-op. So now that we've joined the co-op, there's a specific vendor that has that contract E-plus, and we're gathering all that information and trying to, to, to put together more detailed information. But my goal is to have the financing in place. In order to get the financing in place, once Council approves it, it's going to take at least 36 days. Okay, so the reason for the contingency is because, like right now, we have a, we have certain, we have a contract that we've awarded for, for the building. We have a contract for the clerk of the works that's supervising the contract, we have a contract for the architect. There's approximately $130,000 that's not allocated within the $3.5 million. These additional items, these items are not items that we didn't think about, they're not items that we left out and forgot, they're necessities, they're items that we specifically did not include in the original bid, because these items are only going to be marked up. So the total amount that I'm requesting, this $400,000, I'm trying to build in a contingency in case other issues arise in the building. So if an issue arise, arises, and I have to come back to the Council, if the Council doesn't have some type of ordinance in place where financing can be allocated, it's going to take at least 36 days for that to be put into place, the financing to be put into place, which could delay the project. So the $400,000, I'm not saying that we're going to spend all $400,000, I'm asking for authorization up to that amount. And those bills for that project are going to come back in front of this Council again for approval. Anything that would be over, any equipment that's going to be over 17.5, not on state contract, and if it's on state contract, up to 36.5 is going to come back before the Council again. So the Council is going to have an opportunity to look at those items.
One more thing. I, I'm comfortable with, with the ballpark numbers that you have for each item. I don't think the $85,000 contingency should be there. You should find a way to make it work for the $315,000 and not $400,000.
If every, if everything goes according to plan, and they don't find any issues, we will not have a problem, and we will not need the $85,000. One of the issues that recently creeped up, they did some additional demolition in the building, they had a problem, they found out part of the floor needed to be reinforced, not something that they could see before they got inside the, the building and started tearing things apart. So I just want to have something in place where Council has allocated this, this certain funding, so that if we need to move, that we're not the cause of any delay in the project. The bills will come back before this Council, for the Council to look at and, and to approve.
I'm concerned about the psychology of the contractor. Just a minute. If the contractor sees $85,000 that are already available, then the, the effort or the motivation to make it work for less is not there.
Dr. Fu, we have a construction manager who's overseeing the contractors. Change orders don't come because they just want to change something, and they say, oh, there's $85,000, let's go get it. I mean, we have a building department, we have a construction manager, and we have the Township Manager overlooking change orders to make sure that that $85,000 contingency is just that, used as a contingency if it is valid and is deemed necessary.
Mohammed, the $400,000 is a contingency that we didn't talk about before. We talked about $3.5 million to put that building up, we didn't know about these other bills that are here.
We did, yeah, I agree with you on that.
We didn't have them until we got this report.
I agree with you on that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
First off, I'd like to recognize Molly and Sydney, who are behaving very well in the front row. Hi. And then secondly, I just want to say that I didn't vote for, for this whole capital project to begin with, and it puts me in a, in a very difficult position, supporting additional contingency upon the contingency in the original contract. And, and at this point, I think some of the concerns that I had voiced when I voted against this, as far as the, the cost, the runaway price tag, is sort of, you know, coming, coming to bear. So I clearly can't support adding on additional layers of contingency on a bid project...
There's no contingency in the existing contract.
There is.
No, there isn't.
Yeah, there is.
No, there isn't.
It was a 10%, contingency across the board on the whole project.
No, there's not a contingency in that contract.
And to say, throw addition... And to say throw additional money on a project that I didn't support, support from the first, in the first place, is something that, that I can't support. And I think, you know, this is, this is the opportunity for, for this council to say, okay, well, you know what? The decision was made to go ahead with this project, but now we have an obligation to make sure that this is done as, as responsibly as possible. And, and I think to Dr. Pruitt's point, when we look at what's a standard, what are standard contingencies on add-ons, on, on contracts, and they say, okay, 10% contingency, but this is closer to 25% on another piece that was unforeseen, and it just seems, it seems out of line. And, and I would encourage my colleagues not to, not to support it.
Mr. Guston, there's no contingency in the other contract. The contract is awarded for 2.96 million. There's no contingency in it. It's exactly what it was bid. There's no contingency in it. This isn't unforeseen. We had an estimate of three and a half million dollars for this project over three years ago, when the economy was at its bottom. It is very possible, at that point, if we had moved forward, that three and a half million dollars would have covered all the project. We specifically did not include the cabling, the security cameras in the contract, because all the contractor's going to do is take that, mark it up, and get somebody else to install it. We are going to take on that responsibility ourselves, so that it can't be marked up, saving the taxpayers' money. We've got to have phones, okay? We're having the electrician install the conduit in the wall for the cabling for the phones, but not the cabling, so that it cannot be marked up. So we're going to save the taxpayers' money. There's no contingency in that contract.
We're not saving the money, we're spending less of their money. Right?
Okay. I'll argue about that stuff later, but I think the, if anybody else have any other questions, I think the only thing that needs to be, if you have anybody, that you need an answer on is how council feels about the cars, correct?
Yes, the cars have to be ordered, I believe it's by March 15th. There's a cutoff on the cars, and the cars need to be ordered, or we're not going to get cars for 2014, and we won't be able to get cars till 2015.
That sounds like an excellent idea.
Well, I think, I think it would, it would be an excellent idea not to buy the cars if we were never going to need cars again. Okay? So since we're going to need cars again, that's probably not a good idea.
That's, that's a little flippant. And when we look at the, the six cars a year model, that has, I think, been in place at least my whole eight years on council, there've been, there've been years where we bought four, there's been years where we bought four cruisers and two other vehicles, there's been years where we bought three vehicles, there was a year where we bought no vehicles. And so while six may be an ideal perspective from, from, from the chief's perspective, clearly we have, we have a history of looking at real-world economic and tax situations and making, making decisions outside of that box.
So how many people do we have? Is everybody, is there anybody in favor of purchasing six cars?
What is the impact of not getting all six of the chief?
The impact is the cars just keep getting older. And as the magistrate said, it just pushes everything back another year, and you know...
But the financial impact next year?
The financial impact, you know, we're still going to need six cars again, we're going to need cars, the money is, it doesn't go away, and that's the problem. It, it just never goes away. We, you know, we make money off the cars, it's a whole nother thing, we talked about it during my budget presentation, we made almost $200,000 last year off renting the cars out, which is the cost, by the way, of buying six cars at $195,000. So they basically almost pay for themselves, in essence. I mean, by renting them out to public services, and the fees that are collected from there, they'd be used anyhow, or just be sitting there, not being used at the time. So they actually, and it's...
But I'm not suggesting we stop providing vehicles for, for cost of PSNG. What I'm suggesting is, instead of taking that $200,000 and applying it to the purchase of six cars that I'm not convinced we need, applying that to general police department operating expenses, and actually make $200,000 instead of it being a wash.
Just a question, and you've been very brutally honest during the budget hearing, so I'm going to ask you a question, and by any, it's no way you reflect above my feelings of the police department. Will you make do if we don't order these cars? I understand it's, it's not ideal, but will you make do?
We have no choice.
We'll make do.
You tell me tomorrow that we have 15 police officers, all 15 will show up. And I'm not trying to be flippant, I'm trying to be honest.
No, I, what I'm trying to say is...
We will make do, we have no choice. Reality is, we are at your leisure, and you can determine this, and you can make this decision. And I, I would recommend you don't do it, that you do purchase the vehicles, but the reality is, we will, yes, we will survive.
You will survive, and our police will be on patrol. It's not the ideal financial time, it's fiscal crisis, and we're trying to see where we can squeeze that, and we will...
I just think $200,000 in the grand scheme of things, and for the value you get out of that, and the reliability, because I know everybody in the council and every resident, when they call a police car, they want a car to come, and we can't control the other things that happen, like when a car gets totaled out, or a car goes through a puddle and wastes an engine, those are things that we have no control, just like we all over the staffing, when we talked about the staffing. You know, it's great to say we have 96, but the reality is, we don't have 96. We have 80-something people right now. We just lost someone two weeks ago, again. Two people, actually. So, I mean, the reality is, you're not, you're not really, you're Robin Peter paid for.
Right. And just, just a lot of tough decisions. And we're not, at $200,000, this is one of many $200,000 items that we're trying to have to compress, and we're looking for, and we don't want to do it off the men, we want to do it off the...
I understand.
Chief, you expect that, you expect that you'll need six more cars next year?
I would expect at least that, yes. I mean, it's a safe number.
Forget about the six cars we're talking about now, we expect we need another six cars next year?
Yes.
For the same reason we need them this year.
I mean, the reality is, otherwise, in theory, if we kept, if we kept doing this and not buying cars, I mean, at some point in time, we may need 20 or 30 cars, you know? I mean, or we could just not send people out, and we could, and I'm not being facetious, but police officers would always, right, the corporal, we'd send out two and three detectives in a car, and they'd ride around and go to different places, instead of going in different directions to solve crimes. I mean, and again, it's not meant to be disrespectful, it's meant to be a reality-based thing. You need the cars. When you want to have a car on, on a traffic detail making money, and you want to have a car at Thomas Jefferson to deal with the traffic problem, you want cars to sit over at Bank Franklin, the God's solar panels that are laying on the ground, and sitting up in tri- on, or, you know, at the school up there, and you need cars. Where are we getting from?
Any of the cars that are listed in the inventory inoperable right now?
I'm sure a couple of them, but I mean, you know, just like, you know, minor things, you're probably for repairs. I'm sure it's a couple.
Okay. So I just, I don't want to...
I just have one more question, I'm sorry, I apologize. Chief, do you, do you think that, I mean, this is a tough question to answer, but how do you think the, if we were to decide not to order these cars now, how do you think that would affect the public safety of the residents of Teneck?
That's a real hard one, they have to answer. I don't know. I mean, the reality is, you know what? I don't think it would impact the public safety right now. But I can tell you, it's like anything else, you know? If you, if you don't buy guns, or you don't buy whatever, who knows when it's going to impact things? I don't know. I can't, I can't answer that.
I'm, I'm going to answer that, because here's what I'm going to say, and it's, it's a compliment to you, I feel that you're, a few years ago, when we had to really tighten our belts, your department did probably the most creative with the resources that you were given. And it, it's a reflection on your management, and I'm sure it was a lot harder to manage. I, I saw people on the road from the detective bureau that I haven't seen in years. We, obviously, we shuttered the community policing, and we made some tough decisions. And, and that's all because of your strong leadership, and it's, it goes back to the speech that I gave in the beginning of the budget process. You know, it's, it's not that we're trying to affect or hurt your department or any of the departments. We have limited amount of money, the money belongs to the residents, we want to provide as much service as we can, and we need you to be as creative as possible. And, and not have us try to micromanage of, okay, how about if you take this car from here and put it here? Just, just figure it out, just do the best, keep providing the services, and I say this not just to you, but to all the department heads here, keep providing the, the great services that our residents expect with what we have. Because it's not like it's a little. Everyone's budget is a nice-sized budget, but we have to stay within the lanes.
Okay. So I'm not supportive of the cars this year. Zero? Your number is zero.
My number is zero cars this year.
Okay. Councilman Schwartz? Your number is zero. Right. Dr. Pruitt?
Three.
Three. Councilman Parker, do you have a number? Zero, and it's zero to six.
Three or four?
Three or four?
No cars.
Zero?
Yeah.
Zero.
I, I suggest we take a pass on purchasing cars this year.
Okay, so that's four people that, we have four people that are, who are not going to be, it's not going to pass, so it looks like that we're not going to be moving forward with any cars this year.
I just...
Councilman Parker?
I'm just hoping that this is not just this year, that we're making these hard decisions, and that, I said, I'm hoping that it's not just this particular year, that we're making these decisions to just not purchase vehicles. Because I do remember a few years back, when we decided not to purchase vehicles, when we needed vehicles, it was very difficult to get them back into the budget. I'm, I, I think it's an irresponsible decision.
I just want, maybe, maybe I can clarify, because one of the concerns that I, that I have with this, or a lot of other budget items, is that there's the concern that if we don't spend it this year, then it affects the cap next year. And so unless we spend extra now, we won't get to spend extra later also, and I'm not saying...
I'm talking about getting what we need, not what, not spending extra.
So as far as getting what we need, if, if there were a situation where all of the, God forbid, a solar panel fell and wiped out 10 cruisers all at once, right? I mean, it's imaginable, it certainly could happen, we'd, we'd be in a bind. And so while there's a timeline on the state contract, we can purchase, from a Dodge dealer right here, we can purchase vehicles, right?
Possibly, yeah.
And we can, and we can, and we can negotiate, we can buy the police package vehicle from a dealership, a dealership can order them.
We can not buy it from a dealership, we have to buy it from a state big contractor, and there's only one dealer in the whole state that we can buy the cars.
Did that change since 2016? I remember a conversation that we had very clearly with Helene Fall, talking about cars, that there was the opportunity, at that point, it was the Crown fix, and there was the opportunity for us to go to All-American Ford in Hackensack and purchase vehicles from there. Has that, has the rules changed?
You cannot buy, you can't go to Dodge on Route Four and, and order a, a police package vehicle, it doesn't work that way. They only build them certain, one time a year, they build them, and then whatever they have. Now, I'm not saying that you, we can't go to the deal, we can't go to the winner Ford, who has the contract for the Dodges or whatever, and get one that they have, that's specked out, and whatever they have, they have. I'm not saying that we can't do that at some point in time. What I'm saying is, to order the cars, which is what we do, we order our vehicles a certain way, so that we get them all the same way. That can only be done at this point now.
Right. That I understand, but there are other opportunities, or other avenues to acquire police vehicles.
Maybe if you felt benevolent in a couple of months, and you wanted to purchase a couple of cars, we could do that.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Look, but Dr. Pruitt, I've, I've indulged you, no, Dr. Pruitt, one thing, one thing, one thing. The public is here, and the public is here, and I want to get to Good and Welfare before nine o'clock, and we still have...
I do have a question for you.
Hold on one second, I have one question over here, and then we're going to move on.
It doesn't have to do with the vehicles. The yearly overtime breakdown, or for the manager, either, or who can answer, the special detail, that's the second highest category, what does that include?
The special details, I'm trying to think off the top of my head, actually, special details has to do with criminal investigation, separate investigation, also has to do with a lot of grants. Like, when we do grants, and those are refunded off for other things, mostly it's from grants. Like, we'll get a Safe Streets grant, let's say, for pedestrian safety granted, excuse me, for $17,000. We just put it down as a special detail, and then for our budgeting purposes, so that we can make sure that we take that out of the grant funds.
So what percentage of that overtime spend is then recompensated by, by grants received?
Well, the special details, we only use what we get for grants. And if we get $17,000 for pedestrian safety, we know, we'll do that. How much, I don't know what the number is off the top of my head.
It was 1,508 hours.
1,508 hours, so I mean, it's $65 or $75 an hour. It's not a super incredible amount, but that's always grant money, that's, it's only, like, we get drunk driving enforcement fund grants, we're getting certain number of...
So that item is revenue-neutral now, so...
We make sure that we zero that down, and that's kept to the dollar, basically.
Dr. Pruitt, very brief.
There are three cars over 100,000 miles. I'm suggesting that we get three cars, to make sure we don't have less cars on the road.
Dr. Pruitt, there's not four nodding heads for any cars, so the discussion has moved on. Councilman, Councilman Parker, did you have something else? I'm sorry.
The court costs of a thousand, a little over a thousand hours. Can we get this report next year also, so we can compare it, to see how we've tightened up on that number?
I'm going to try to get the same items.
Okay. All right.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you, I appreciate your time.
Jamie, the next item on tonight's agenda is public hearing and adoption of ordinances. Jamie, if you could read ordinance number, I'm sorry?
We're done with the budget.
For now, yeah, because that was the one issue.
I did have one other issue with the fire calls to FDU.
Can we put that back, can we get back to the budget after Good and Welfare? Okay. Next item on tonight's agenda is public hearing and adoptions of ordinances. Jamie, can you read ordinance number 6-2014?
An ordinance amending sections 36-25 and 36-25.1 of Division III of Article II of Chapter 36, entitled Traffic of the Township Code, deleting a portion of Edmond Place from Section 36-25, one-hour parking between the hours of 8:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m., except Sundays and holidays, and adding a portion of Edmond Place to Section 36-25.1, one-hour parking between 8:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m., except Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays.
Thank you. Public hearing is now open on ordinance number 6-2014. Would any members of the public like to comment on this ordinance, and this ordinance only? You'd like to talk about the ordinance on Edmond Place? Come on up, Art.
My concern, and I might be out of place in saying this, by the way, it's Art Vatsky, is that it would be great to have a visual to show how this fits in with all the other different parking restrictions that we have. Right now, we do this piecemeal, and we don't do it in organized fashion, and it doesn't seem like a modern way to, to do things. We ought to look and see. You've got the point.
Thank you.
Thanks. You please interrupt me, if that's not proper, because I'm talking related issue of parking. The thing is, I don't know how other streets are, but on Beverly, I was told that it's alternate side parking, and during storms in New York, it's suspended. Here, it was not. The plow came, buried the cars, they could not be removed, and we were ticketed. So the, the residents asked, okay, please do what New York does, and please cancel tickets, because it is not our fault. Please consider it.
Thank you. Art, with regards to what you're talking about, we are working on Global Information, G.I.S. software, so that we could map out these things. It's, it's a longstanding issue with a lot of the infrastructure that we have here, that we can't get the information up on a screen that, like, we'd like to have. So we are looking at, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we look at these things piecemeal, maybe because we could use some G.I.A., but, but each street is a different type of issue, so I, you know, I guess that's what...
Sometimes I think that, I would agree with you, if it wasn't for the fact that sometimes we always go through this, it's like, we kick the, we kick the curb, you know, like, when it's parking enforcement for commuters, we move it from one street to the next street to the next street, not realizing sometimes how we're impacting the street alignment.
Yeah, it's because we're reacting to, you know, to requests from residents who live on that block.
Agreed.
And I think we should still...
Yes, the public portion is now closed. Agreed, to both. No, I agree with both of you.
This was, it was on Edmond, right? This was put forth by the, by the residents, correct?
Yeah.
We have to do a piecemeal, residents' piecemeal, and generally, we should probably have a setup, but it's, it is by the residents' piecemeal, we can't give a deadline to all residents. Can I?
And this is, this is just adding Saturday to one of the days that the parking restriction is, isn't in effect.
Wonderful. I'd like to move ordinance number 6-2014. Can I get a second?
One second.
Second by Councilman Parker, roll call, please.
Councilman Parker? Yes. Councilman Mr. Stern?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Gossen?
Yes.
Councilman Pruitt?
Yes.
Councilman Katz?
Yes.
Councilman Schwartz?
Yes.
Next item on tonight's agenda is Good and Welfare, this is where anybody can speak on any topics that they'd like for five minutes. First hand, please, Howard Rose.
Good evening, Howard Rose, TNEC resident. Comments on two things. First, just regarding the police budget, seems to me you have a person who has some very strong preferences, and who also happens to head your police department, and I'm wondering why you're telling that person yes or no regarding ordering cars, as opposed to saying, "Go back, start from the beginning, speak with the manager, redetermine using your priorities what you want this budget to be." If you're spending ten million dollars and saying you can't spend a portion of it for this, then maybe you should go back to the drawing board and determine what shouldn't be spent on within that ten million dollars, or whatever the figure is, and put in the cars, the automobiles. What you're doing is you're telling the person who you've appointed to a very responsible position, "Your recommendation on this specific item is not what we're going to let you do, because we have better knowledge, we have more knowledge." I don't think you do. So again, back to the drawing board, discuss what your priorities are within the police department, and give a little more latitude to your chief of police. Other item, Route Four. I'm glad you got a little more information on it, so that you can focus again what your needs and needs aren't. I'm also concurrently a little disappointed that you even went in that direction, as opposed to listening to the residents of the town saying, "It's not a matter of the money on this item." It's a matter of money on a lot of other items, but on this item regarding Route Four, and putting something that is a beast on the plains, just doesn't make sense, and it's not the direction that you should be considering. It ruins, I guess psychologically, what we would like to have, we don't necessarily do have, but in terms of what is TNEC. I keep thinking, what are the things that we do have? We have a conception that it's a more bucolic situation, a long Route Four, than the other towns, and once you go down the road, literally and figuratively Route Four, and change the scenery, even a small amount, even if you shove it off and say that, who cares, it's right next to Englewood, not that many people see it, when you put a huge, monstrous piece that is not just huge and looming to the eye, but has lights on it, this is not a good situation for TNEC. I like TNEC, I like it a lot. I don't like that. Think about it, do you really?
Next. Nobody else? Alex Rashid, Dr. Alex Rashid?
Dr. Alex Rashid, TNEC. A couple of things. The thing with the project for, for connection of the, um, former police building to the municipal building was designed, developed, and those stuff, nobody mentioned that we'll have to remove, uh, the asbestos from this building, and those, uh, stuff and all that. And I think that's bad organizational project. So the contract was approved, but it's not a functional, uh, contract, because it cannot be functional, it's not connected. The, the building will be built, but not connect by cable, by anything, and all that. So the other thing is that, uh, I'm sorry, well, there is a, this budget approved contract for nine, for, for three, uh, three million dollars, and please keep to the budget and forget about its four hundred thousand. Because it's a good talks, we did not do that, that continues the different contract. Okay, thing is that there is a second floor in the connector, which is an appendix. There is no second floor in municipal building. This is a road to nowhere, and personally, the wheelchair has, being on the second floor of the former police building, has to wheel to the, to the municipal building, take elevator, uh, and, uh, going one floor down, and wheel back into the, the first floor of the police building. It's idiotic, it's a construct, okay? And the thing is, it's possible to put the elevator next to the police building, nobody has to, to run the, the wheelchairs back and forth, and everything will be okay. And do not build second floor of the connector, because it's not functional, it's, it's a big foyer, two, two stories foyer, with one office, I think, or so, or something. It's, again, idiotic construct, and if any of the members of the council want to be signatories to the idiotic, idiotic, I'm sorry for, for harsh words, but idiotic concept, okay? Yes, support it, but otherwise, cut four hundred thousand, find money in the current, three million dollars, and, and say, for example, uh, "Do not build the second floor of the connectors, which is non-functional, unnecessary, and, and silly." Okay? That's one of the things, please do not, it's almost half a million dollars. Another question, uh, to the, to the, uh, budget, to the resolutions, I think, yes, is the still continuation of the, of the testing. There is a, a contract there to spend a hundred twenty-five or something thousand dollars to, to, again, test contamination because of green acres, well, just a grant. Basically, I think all the money, almost all the money of the grant will be spent on all this testing, okay? I, I do not see when it's going to end, okay? And when we'll start to do some job, instead of testing, testing one way, the other way, slightly less money, slightly more money, and, 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 well, just, it's an ending story. And these are two major things about the cars, uh, I, I think, maybe, oh, okay, it's possible to, to survive without buying them, it's fine, but, uh, well, um, the thing is that these are relatively small money. Here, we are talking about four hundred thousand dollars, okay, which is a big thing, it should not be approved, okay? It should have been considered in the, in the plan, in the, in the engineering, in architectural stuff, it's not there, it's, it's poorly thought through, even the first floor is a corridor, which is not functional, okay? But if you decide, okay, so it's necessary for, for, to be able to walk under the roof from one floor to the other, okay, hell, let it be a, a compromise, but save this four hundred thousand dollars, do not spend it at all, do not approve it at all. Again, consider what is going on with, with Ford Park, why we have to spend through money after money after money. While we were given only six hundred thousand, uh, money of the grant, it's all gone. We, we could very well live without the grant, just put it on the top of, of what we had, and be happy, okay? So it was, was, uh, was just, uh, uh, error of judgment, not studying where it leads to the, the green acres and testing and all stuff, and this is the, um, dump at some point, okay? So we should proceed and say, "No, take it, take it away, we don't need it," okay? Put, put on the top of, of the, of this one, we filled the, the, uh, artificial turf, and, and be happy without all the troubles and all stuff. Please, just do reasonable and rational, well, just, uh, the planning and, and the budget, okay? And please tell exactly, because budget becomes very complicated, what will be a tax levy, okay?
Thank you, Dr. Rashid.
How much will jump up from previous year? That's all.
Thank you, Dr. Rashid. Alan?
Alan Stone, TNEC resident. Uh, I must say I like that line, that I'm not at liberty to say something that is public record. That really is a classic. Uh, I did enjoy the presentation, and the estimate for, of two to five million dollars for billboards specified rather clearly back-to-back billboards over a period of twenty years, and it sort of surprises me that no one noticed that that statement was for back-to-back billboards. Uh, for quite a while, we've heard that there would be a single billboard facing those poor, unfortunate folks in Englewood who would have to be staring at the billboard. Uh, I do hope that someone recognizes that back-to-back billboards means that one is facing Englewood, and the other is facing into TNEC. No matter how you do the math, uh, two to even five million, uh, over that period of twenty years is not three hundred thousand dollars a year, and if it's a single billboard, the consistent math has been that those bring in about a hundred thousand dollars a year, maybe a couple of dollars more, that is just certainly not three hundred thousand dollars a year. It, it truly disappoints me to hear explicitly that the four hundred thousand dollars that has been allocated in the capital budget, uh, for what is called the municipal building, is clearly and specifically tasks and expenditures that are related to the reconstruction of the old police building. It doesn't save any money, it just shifts the money. What was supposed to be a three and a half billion, and we were told was only a two-point-nine million dollar project, just had four hundred thousand dollars added in. And I think that lack of openness and transparency in not disclosing that the purpose of those funds are for expenditures directly related to the old police building project is something that is very disappointing. I agree a hundred percent with Councilmember Parker's statement, that it is an irresponsible decision to not buy police cars. Based on the data in the manager's report, the TNEC Police Department drove police cars four hundred and twenty-eight thousand miles last year. No matter what you do, these cars are driven consistently about a hundred thousand miles, whether you buy them or you don't buy them, you are using about a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand miles worth of police cars, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of police cars each year. All you're doing is you're pushing that expenditure off to future years, when eight, ten, twelve police cars may have to be purchased. Unless cars are driven more miles, more than a hundred thousand miles, or they're driven fewer miles each year, you will use those miles, and instead of having cars that average fifty thousand miles, which is exactly what you'd expect if you're driving cars on an average of a hundred thousand miles, there will be that many more older cars, cars that are that much more likely to break down. Unless changes are made, that accomplishes nothing. The questions that are being answered this evening are questions, are questions that are finally being answered even after having been outstanding for weeks, if not months, going back to January. The story that we heard at the last council meeting about tax appeals and that number finally not being available was a poorly told story. The number was available, the number is in the manager's report, and it was readily available from the TNEC, uh, Bergen County Board of Taxation. The tax appeal losses were about ninety million dollars. The amount that's owed is two-point-two-five million dollars, and apparently, in the township of TNEC, the township of TNEC is not at liberty to say something that is public record. CPS Interactive has no obligation to provide information about its clients. New Jersey Transit does. The township of TNEC has an obligation to disclose how much it owes, and I don't care how much each individual is getting, or what the total is, or what the bottom lines are, but the total does make a difference. And the inability of this township council and of the township manager to share basic fundal information about our liabilities and how much has to be paid is something that is inherently disappointing. There are all sorts of Oprah requests that are outstanding, and this is all public information. These are all things where this township has an obligation to provide this information, and this township has asked for weeks and weeks and weeks of delays. This is all information that is public record, and I sincerely hope that this township council will finally start making the obligation to meet its standards that are established under state law, and I hope that we can find a responsible council making responsible financial decisions going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Jason?
Jason Castle, TNEC. I'm going to echo some of the themes of, uh, Alan Stone, about information that is, uh, public knowledge not being actually transmitted. Alan Stone spoke about Oprah requests being outstanding, and there are a number of people that show up to council meetings who have submitted several Oprah requests. I think even from the DA's, you joked about the fact that there are individuals who have, uh, caused the township to actually bone up on the clerk staff so that those Oprah requests could be handled. I submitted my very first Oprah request back in January. Uh, it was straightforward, it was specific, uh, it asked for numerous, you know, numerous amounts of information. One was, uh, just, uh, financial disclosures for township, you know, for specific township employees, uh, specific, uh, individuals who sit on the DA's as council members. Uh, it also asked for correspondence, electronic and otherwise, between council members Stern, uh, Councilman Katz, and Councilman Schwartz regarding, uh, the deputy, excuse me, the lieutenant governor's visit to TNEC, as well as the governor's visit to TNEC, um, because all of these documents are public knowledge. Um, I actually submitted that Oprah request on January thirty-first, because the precedent had been set at the state level, that if there was a correspondence that was done through a personal email, e- personal email, it became open record, as we saw at the state level. It's March fourth, and I haven't received closure to that particular Oprah request. I submitted a second Oprah request on February fourteenth, Valentine's Day. Uh, my Oprah requests tend to come on Fridays, because I'm happy that the municipal complex is, is now open on Fridays, and in that particular Oprah request, I requested information regarding ordinances that allow the township to do business with specific banks. Uh, I wanted to be sure that there was no conflict of interest, since, uh, a number of individuals on council actually sit on the boards of banks, and it, clearly, uh, it would be a conflict of interest if they voted for an ordinance that allowed business to go to that bank. And that particular Oprah request also has not been, uh, responded to. I submitted a, a final Oprah request just this past, uh, this past week, and it was very simple, it was, it was information that should have been available immediately. It was how many individuals have actually submitted, uh, signed petitions for the upcoming council election. That Oprah request has not yet, hasn't even been acknowledged, let alone fulfilled. Now, I went to, you know, because I was unfamiliar with Oprah requests, I actually went to council, and I had them proof the request, to make sure that everything was straightforward, but to have an Oprah request that's still outstanding from January thirty-first about information that should be publicly accessible, an Oprah request that's outstanding from February fourteenth, that should be publicly accessible, and now to have an Oprah request that hasn't even been acknowledged, uh, I mean, that's, that's just adding insult to injury. Lastly, I just want to say that, you know, this Oprah process is something that I'm unfamiliar with, and I, you know, I've heard grumblings about people, you know, from people who come to council meetings and they can't get information. I've even heard, uh, grumblings from some of the reporters who come to council meetings who have submitted Oprah requests and can't get information. Uh, because I actually escorted our clerk, uh, into the records room, or I guess where all the filing cabinets were, and things were, you know, somewhat in a disarray and out of order, I think there's part of this process that can be approved upon, but I'm merely asking for information that should be available immediately. I've asked for information regarding contracts that, according to the state statute, should be available immediately, and here we are in March with Oprah requests that were submitted in January, and they haven't been resolved. So I need your help in actually getting those issues resolved, because many of those Oprah requests, uh, they actually do indeed entail some of you, uh, so if you can help the clerk in getting her that information, but we're beyond thirty days. Uh, we're, we started in January, we're, we're in March, and I haven't gotten any information. Um, if, and I've gotten partial information, but I haven't had a single Oprah request that's actually been completed in, in its entirety. So perhaps you can direct whoever needs to be directed, perhaps you can, you know, rally the troops, but that's, that's uncalled for, that's, that's, I don't know what to call it, but it, we're in March, and I asked for them in January. Thank you.
Okay, Art Vasquez again, I'm hoping I won't get too mixed up. I first want to, uh, direct a comment about Chief Wilson's remarks. Chief Wilson is a law enforcement professional, he's not an automotive professional, and, nor is the manager. The, the, um, the use of six vehicles annually is a very crude measure of how you replace vehicles. The way to replace vehicles, I know this because I am an auto repair professional, the way to replace vehicles is to look at their service records, not only their miles, their miles and their hours, the amount of accidents they've had, the amount of repair problems they've had, okay? That would be a more scientific way to do this, not the calendar and not the odometer. Some of our best vehicles could be older, and some of the new vehicles could be in the shop after time because they're unwarranted. So I think the six, depending on six new vehicles a year is good for the nineteen-fifties, but not now. We're in the twenty-first century, and I'm willing to speak with and talk with the chief to mention some of the other criteria. Uh, I'm saying this now because about ten years ago, there was a proposal, a bid proposal out, to do exactly this, to provide a scientific way to manage all our fleet vehicles, and I bid on it, and the proposal was pulled. So from that time to this, I don't know what's happened, but we're in a very much more scientific, measured way to evaluate vehicles which should be kept and which should be released. I would also say in the order of three vehicles, because how difficult this past... I would also say, in the order of three vehicles, because how difficult this past winter, this current winter has been, some considerations should have been made, but first, you look at the vehicle repair records. Next item. The next item is the billboards. The billboards are not such a bad idea if we were a commercial town. Last I checked, we're a residential town. And I can't say I strongly endorse having billboards. And I also want to remind the council, because I drove west on Route 4 today, I didn't drive, I was on a bus, there are no billboards anywhere near Teaneck on Route 4. We would be the first. I see Councilman Guston takes exception to that, but I didn't see any from maybe Grand Avenue or past Grand Avenue. So this is not a good signal. I don't think this is good for the home values of Teaneck, our property values. And I also think, and I'm looking at some of you, especially the long-term members, that the silent secret here that we have to go for billboards is because of the failure of prior councils and this current council with the Teaneck Economic Development Corporation, which has provided essentially, as far as I know, no, has not completed anything, and provided to boost us. And you can raise what comments you have, but, you know, I'm on Cedar Lane, and I'm elsewhere. And if that had been a protected, pardon, not protected, productive activity, okay, we wouldn't need this billboard. You guys were asleep at the switch. And this irks me and disappoints me, okay? Every other community around us seems to be bustling, and we're dragging. And Mayor, I have to mention this, you talked about a clerk of the works or a construction manager, okay, and that's going to protect the council or the building project. I can't trust you on that. We had the same on Cedar Lane.
We did.
Yes, we did. We hired a special guy for that, under the town engineer. That's what I was told. So I'm questionable on that issue. If I'm wrong, I'm willing to be wrong. Final thing, the power station, the gen set. The gen set is so big, it's out of place. It's out of place, and should be moved next to the waste collection site.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Barbara Turner, TURN. I'm coming on a different lens. I'm coming with a little compassion. I am a parent, and I am also a homeowner. I am a parent and also a homeowner. I live on Route 4, and I've been there for a very long time. I was here at the planning board, and I wanted to get information on exactly the billboards, the thorn in the outside, what it would look like, what it would impact, what it would do to safety on Route 4, what it would do to the environment in cutting down the trees. I wanted to get an explanation on where does the green belt start and where does it end. Unfortunately, I was not able to get any of those answers, so I came again tonight. But I guess I must have missed the memo, because I thought that you would be voting, but instead, you had the billboard presentation. So I was excited, and I said, oh my goodness, these people will answer my questions, and I'll get additional information. Something that really concerned me, not only from the safety point, was the content for the billboard, of which I still don't feel that I got a clear understanding or a clear answer to. And as you, some of you are nodding, I think you feel the same way. I've been in Teaneck for a very long time, and my daughter was always excited about being in Teaneck and becoming an EMT. So when she was 15 and a half, she went to the volunteer department, they paid for her training, and since that time, she's been a Teaneck volunteer. I can only tell you how many times that I have been sitting in my home, where she has and we have either made a phone call to the police to tell them about an accident on Route 4, or for her to put on her boots, grab her little orange bag, run across the highway to assist someone who got injured. So when we're talking about billboards, I need to know more about the environment, what treats be cut down, and exactly what impact does that have on safety? Because anytime, we all know as drivers, anytime that there's something to distract us from the road that leads to potential safety, loss of life, loss of property, and I think this is just something that needs to be explored and just sort of understood and presented. So, and I also, because I just love getting information, after I left the planning board, I went back, and I did all this research, and I had all these articles, and I had all these quotes, but there's only one quote that I would like to leave you with tonight, and that's, "Any distraction with, any distraction will degrade your driving skills and ability." Texting, cell phones, billboards, because studies have shown that when we look at billboards, if we know the information, we will glance for a shorter period of time. If the billboard excites us, and we want to get more information, the glance will be longer. So going back to the quote, "Any distraction will degrade your driving skills and ability." To think that it doesn't is arrogant and foolish. And this was from the Huffington Post and the Hartford School of Public Health. Thank you.
Thank you. Barbara Turner. Thank you. Anyone else? Naomi?
Firstly, on this $400,000. I have been at a lot of meetings dealing with this project, this thing. We all, a lot of us said, scale it down. Nobody mentioned this $400,000 or all those things that are in that list. Nobody mentioned that. Why wasn't that mentioned when you were discussing what the costs of the project would be? It just didn't make any sense to me that now you're adding this money. So I really feel that something is amiss, and I'm not sure what it is. And maybe this could still be included in the bond. I didn't understand the markup. If it wasn't in the, was it in the original bid, that it would be marked up? What does that mean? It costs more than it should? I didn't quite get that. Also, on the cars, considering the winter, you know, maybe we could use one or two all-wheel drive, more all-wheel drive vehicles, I don't know. But I mean, that's a possibility. I mean, if we're going to go into winters like this, and these cars are going to have to go up and down streets that haven't been well plowed, they can slip and slide. So, I mean, I was just away, and... I was just away. We have a house upstate, and it was all ice. I had to use bath mats and towels just to get to my car. And we have a wonderful four-wheel drive now, and we were still slipping and sliding going around. So I just want you to be sure that you have enough of your all-wheel drive vehicles for the future winters that we're going to have. I'm assuming they're going to be the same. The billboard situation, I want to thank Alan Sohn. I must say I missed it, that it was back-to-back billboards, which means that Teaneck would have a billboard facing it, as well as the billboard facing Englewood, in order to get the full amount that he talked about. And you talked about needing the money for tax rebate. Well, what does $100,000 a year, how much does that cost each taxpayer? $5, $10? Is that worth? I don't think if you ask the public that that's worth $5 or $10 a year to destroy Route 4's quiet, calm, no billboards. So I think that needs to be reconsidered. I'm also, if you are bent on doing this, then the new ordinance, you have to reintroduce a new ordinance, I guess. I'm not sure what the process was. If you, had you introduced an ordinance yet, the ordinance, you had it, you gave it out? Because there were changes that was made at the planning board. One of them was that the ordinance reads all districts on all of Route 4, and I know Mr. Stern specifically was upset, and said that it should only say industrial areas if you're going to have a billboard. They can only be in an industrial area. And Mohammed, the mayor, said that we should add that they can't be seen by residents. I mean, I sat through that planning board meeting, and those were the two changes that it wasn't clear whether when the planning board was sending that back to you, that that was going to be included in the new ordinance that you're going to be introducing if you're going to introduce the ordinance. So, and if you don't plan to do back-to-back, then you're going to get half the amount, and the billboard facing Teaneck is going to be this black thing, this non-thing for the Teaneck residents to look at as they ride along Route 4. So there are other ways you can find money, and I hope you would find those.
Thank you.
I have some suggestions.
Dr. Powers?
I missed the presentation on the billboards, and I do hope that the council will adopt the process of getting onto its website, not only the things that it has promised the state it would do, which it is not doing, but also the reports that are made here. For those of us who, like tonight, I was over at the freeholders' meeting, because there was, in addition to an announcement I was making to the freeholders, and I will make to you, that Anthony Kurten will be on the 20th of March, making a presentation for his suggestion for having at least a majority of nine freeholders be elected by district as a way of allowing particularly municipalities to have better assured representation on the freeholders' board. I'm hopeful that some of you will be sufficiently interested in to follow through on it. And this is a little odd tonight, I hope I'm not being charged to my time on this, but you are welcome to that. I found when I got there that they were actually doing the, doing the two additional proposals on pay-to-play beyond those that they had passed several weeks ago, that were consistent with Bergen Grassroots has been proposing, one of which is, one of which is to make sure that ELEC, the Election Law Enforcement Commission, is both given additional powers, but also the capacity to make sure that its website is fully available, something that several of you may be worried about because of where you are in relationship to your own reports on those questions. And if you are interested, I will be glad to specify who those are. But the issue of making sure that the Election Law Enforcement Commission is functioning effectively in this state is an extremely important issue, and by unanimous vote tonight, the freeholders passed that on, I'm happy to say that. So therefore, I missed some of what you had to say, so I'm going to make a few other comments. One, I should have introduced myself by saying I'm a full professor of, in the Department of Civil and Environmental Engineering at Vanderbilt, and I am very substantially concerned that the old police building and the trenches around it were begun just before the winter came. Because one thing one does not do, particularly around old buildings, of which this is one, it's a part of the connector, and the old police building, you don't dig trenches by the foundations of a building just before major thawing and freezing occurs. And I am hopeful that this council will make sure that since it doesn't have an independent engineer overseeing that, because as I told you last time, the engineer who actually proposed the trench building for that building is the same person as your acting engineer. I hope that you do, in fact, make sure that you know what is actually happening with that, with that situation. I'm not saying it's going to happen. I'm saying that if you take a look at the literature around this question, you would find out that doing what we did by digging those trenches when we did, and then having the kind of winter we did, is putting that entire project in jeopardy. And we've already decided to spend $277,000 more for that project than the lowest bid, and this council took no interest in that at all. How you got turned around the bend on trying to put $100,000 more into this township's tax base, when in fact, you absolutely ignored the fact that there was a bid for $277,000 less, that had some small technical thing wrong with it, and you spent not even a moment talking about it before you went and voted that night. There is something, there is a screw loose in the way in which people are thinking about the relationship between revenue and outcome. Everything Mr. Sohn apparently said tonight, because I heard on to the end of it, about the fact that we knew, you knew, you at least, I'm not saying all of you, I actually believe that at least two of you did not know, that there was a $2.25 million charge coming on the issue associated with handing back tax appeal money, which was a part of a process on which you lost $90 million in tax base. And somehow, that was not entered into all of your discussions over the course of the last, over the course of the last two and a half months. And now you're going to be up against it, trying to face and pace the major decisions, getting information much too late in this process, and trying to add $100,000 for something that the, that I am absolutely convinced, and I, when you were asking Mr. Stern whether or not there was, there was information about the green belt, take a look, if you don't have it, I will give it to you, what Nikki Case provided to this council when you were first discovering, discussing the hotel zone about that question. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no other hands, Gunwalfers, not closed.
Ms. Turner, thank you for coming in and asking those questions. And we also have those same questions. And the first process, the first thing that we were looking at in this process when we were exploring the idea of billboard is what would be the revenue numbers. We've talked about different places where we've heard what people would be paying for those double-sided billboards, and now we have the largest outdoor company to tell us it's going to be between $2 and $5 million. Now the devil comes that's going to be in the details of how high it's going to be. We're maybe, we're going to go do some more research on our own to look back what's going to happen, maybe commit to a subcommittee, and then move forward in a thoughtful process and figuring out if it's worth doing the billboard. Just to put it in perspective, you know, we're arguing about, or not arguing, there's one side complaining about a building that's going to cost somewhere between $3, $3.5 million. So if you bonded over 20 years, if you have that same revenue coming in from a billboard, that building now becomes a wash. So these are the decisions that we have to make in this township council, and we take those decisions very seriously. With regards to the Oprah request, you know, what is taking so long with the Oprah request? Jamie?
Mayor, upon receipt of the Oprah request, I requested an extension in writing from Mr. Castle for 30 days. Contractual agreements were provided, financial disclosures were provided, and our IT did an extensive search for communications, which resulted in thousands of pages, which has been sent to our...
So he got the contracts that he said that he didn't get?
Contractual agreements were provided.
You sent the contracts?
Yes. Financial disclosures were provided, and the remaining element is communications, which resulted in thousands of pages. So that's now pending legal review.
For 30 or 45 days? Because I know I myself went through this, you know, I mean, obviously, we can send it to him in writing, but I'm sure he wouldn't mind, you know, he understands how onerous this request was. You know, I spent four hours going through his Oprah requests, nine points, very detailed, going back to 2008, just going harvesting my own personal emails, just in case there was a crossover between the time that I switched to a Teaneck email address. So I assume you have no problem giving another 45, 60, but we can get you as much as we can.
By law, by law, statute of states...
I don't know, he just wanted...
Right, so, no, actually, I'm sorry, I shouldn't be going back and forth. Right, so, no, actually, I'm sorry, I shouldn't be going back and forth. But, Dana.
Thank you. Go.
Did you say that you submitted the election financials?
Financial disclosures were provided to Mr. Castle, along with any contractual agreements that he requested.
Because you said you didn't get, you have proof that you sent it to him?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, I'm sorry, I'll have a bunch of comments. Was it my turn in line, or should I have a bunch of comments?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I want to thank everyone for coming out and all their opinions, and I definitely, as relates to the billboard, I think it's whether it be $200,000 to $500,000, a million, it's worth the review, and I think we're doing the right thing. Everyone's gone up here and said, "Cut taxes, bring in revenue, cut taxes, bring in revenue." We're doing the research, and if the research shows that it's just not worth it, then it's just not worth it. But I think we're going to do everything we can to make sure that we try our best. To the comment that it's dangerous because it's billboards, I mean, there's dozens of billboards on Route 4 and hundreds on Route 17, and I have never been on, I've only been on about 1,025 ambulance calls, none were related to that in order of looking at signs in TNEC. But it's something that we definitely have to, definitely have to evaluate to see if the money is worth it. And Mr. Stone, I just, you wanted to point out, you wanted us to be more like Ramsey. Ramsey has plenty of billboards, and I'm not sure if there was an alternate speech, if there was speech A and speech B. Speech A, if we approved the police cars, we need to cut money. But now that we didn't approve the police cars, it's on the wheel. Everyone who's against spending money is up here saying, "We should have spent the money." And once again, Ramsey, by the way, spends a lot less on their police cars because they have much smaller cars. I'm not sure if you're aware of Ramsey's police car fleet, it's much smaller than ours as it relates to the physical vehicles. So as much as I am not an expert in fleet, me and incident, whatever engineering I was told people are experts with, it's something that we have to authorize, and it's something that I took the liberty of my position to say, "Not this year." There's plenty of brand-new cars, that's fine, they will survive, and the police, she said they will survive. As it relates to Mr. Castle and the Oprah, you used the words merely immediately. You requested it on January 31st, I believe was the date. That was 32 days ago, let's remember, it's 28 days, 32 days ago, it's March 4th, it's 28 days in February. Merely immediately to go through all my emails and then turn it over to our attorney that needs to review every single one of the Oprah statutes. I'm sorry, I'm going to ask council to make sure all my emails are thoroughly vetted before I have that turned over to the public, and I believe that's what Oprah law requires of me. And I'm going to ask the council, please keep track of those hours and what it costs to go through this nine-point email, so when we do have a large legal tab from you, we know it is part of our hundreds of Oprah's every single day. If emails are found online that fulfill his request, by all means, please have that given over to him. I want to make sure I comply with that letter of law. But to use the words merely immediately, I'd appreciate if you can take the, to review each of those emails to make sure they comply. And thank you.
Just one other thing, I know that Chuck Powers likes to be all, you know, well-bored about everything, and I know he teaches at the School of Engineering, but you're not an engineer. You know, I mean, you always impress that, and I don't want to make a back and forth, but you always imply that you are and you know something about it. So I just wanted to make, clear that up for the public. Does anybody else have anything to say?
Is there an additional clause to these emails?
It's not part of the term.
With respect to the Oprah request and the election information in terms of petitions, I shared with the clerk the Newark website, which actually publishes the residents that have taken out petitions as well as certified them, and asked her if she could adopt that policy, because it shouldn't be a secret to anyone, including council. So we're not getting the information either, who is taking out petitions and who has certified them. And I'd like to see us, maybe we can't have an additional page, but there's no reason why we can't have something on the website so that people can go online and see who's taking out petitions and return them.
Mayor, if I may, when I had members of the public requesting the nomination packets, I actually created a document, which I received some from the council also, with those who picked up the petition packets, there was never a denial, verbal or written, given to them. So I just requested something in writing, that's all. I have a document ready to be released.
But I don't, I mean, why would permission need to be granted by who? It's public information, isn't it?
No, there's no permission, I need something in writing. I created it as an Oprah request, so I created a document with the names of those who are who.
Okay, well, what, do we need to adopt a resolution for you to release that information? I mean, it's public information.
No, I actually created a public document.
Right, but if that document's not being disseminated, if the document is in no one's hands, we can call it a public document, but it's not a public document.
Exactly.
I think that's the issue. And so I think what Councilman Parker is saying is, why is there a hurdle to people accessing that information? Just put it on the website. And I think, I think that there's, legally, there's absolutely nothing wrong with us doing that.
Newark has it, it's a wonderful page.
Putting the information as to who's picked up petition packets and who's been certified for the ballot, it's all public information, let's just go ahead and put it on the website. You have the document, post it to the website tomorrow.
Does anybody else have anything?
Yes, in addition to that, the minutes for all of the public meetings, I had asked when a resident had requested that information before, to be in line with New Jersey best practices. What are we doing or what have we done since that time?
As far as the planning board and... Yes. Okay, so I spoke with Rosalind McLean, the secretary to the planning board on Board of Adjustment, and it was not prior practice, but she's now instituted it. We're creating a separate section on the website underneath from the homepage where there is government, there's boards and commissions, and then there's two separate sections for both of her boards where her minutes and her agendas are going to be posted.
Okay. And as far as agendas, what is the timeframe in which an agenda ends up on the website? And is it easily displayed for residents to see it, or does it require an extensive? No, for all, for all public meetings, the statutory boards specifically.
I'll ask her, as far as, you know, what her practice is, make sure it's in session with what, I don't think there's a statute regarding distribution of the agendas, but I will, for me, it's the Friday before any meeting.
Okay.
It's posted online, but I will speak with her about her timeframe.
Yeah, it's an interesting meeting. Everybody in the room is interested in not having taxes go up. Everybody's also interested in getting everything that we want, including police stations and police cars. But the problem here is we need revenue. And when an idea comes forward that's going to provide some revenue, there's another set of people that comes out and says, "We don't want to get the revenue that way." So my suggestion to the public is, if anyone has an idea that will help us provide revenue, they will not bring out a set of people who will oppose it, let's hear it.
Actually, Mayor, Councilman Stern?
Yeah, Councilman Pruitt, that's a very good point, actually. I think maybe we could just expand on that a little bit, and if anybody has an idea to bring in revenue, even if it does bring out people on the other side, they should come up and tell us about that as well. So.
And just for the record also, I don't think anybody was on council when this, Alec Hart's not here, but was talking about the streetscape. None of us are involved with the streetscape from the council that I know of. At least I wasn't. Oh, you, oh, sorry, two people were on the council, two of my colleagues.
Yeah, actually.
But I was not here, nor was I mayor, nor was I any of the other things when the council did the streetscape.
Well, actually, Mayor, talking about bringing in, you know, ideas about bringing in revenue, I mean, there, over the, over the, over the years in TNEC, there have been some very, very good ideas about bringing in revenue with development over the years. The, all the buildings, the buildings we see for the most part, you know, on the other side of the turnpike from the Glen Point, were originally proposed on the TNEC side, and it was the same people and a similar group of people who came out and complained against and worked against that, and that was shot down in the late 80s. There was some substantial development proposals on the tennis court, which is now stop and shop in the Cedar Lane area, and the same group of people that were, a lot of whom we're seeing today as well, came out and the council turned that down as well. You know, it's, we have an obligation, a fiduciary responsibility to our taxpayers to, as Dr. Pruitt said, and thank you very much for mentioning that, Dr. Pruitt, to look at, take a really serious look at any proposal that comes forward that makes some sort of sense. You know, the billboards, I don't know where it's headed, I have absolutely no idea. I don't know whether it's $2 million or $5 million, and I, you know, and yes, absolutely, I did pay attention, I'm sure all of us knew it said back-to-back billboards, I think. It's a little disingenuous of us, some people will say we're not paying attention to them when people say stuff to us, but that's basically it, that is basically it.
And also, what this, this council did, get rid of the TNEC Economic Development Corporation, some members of this council besides Dr. Pruitt and Councilman Schwartz, that's because, you know, that organization at the time that I felt when I voted to get rid of it wasn't just doing the job. And I also sit on the Bergen County Economic Development Corporation, which is, again, in just job preservation, it's not really, there's not really a lot of economic development going on in the county or in town. So that's why, at least from my standpoint, why I voted to get rid of the TEDC. Councilman Parker?
Just along the lines of the billboard discussion, we did ask for some information based upon the report, the comprehensive report that Marie Warnke had provided. I would like that information as far as what other towns are making on billboards. Also, a traffic study, will that be required to see if it would cause a negative impact onto Route 4, and who's responsible for conducting that? Is it even necessary or required?
Those are good questions that we all have to look into.
And, you know, at first, you know, in first hearing about the billboards, I had some concerns, I still do have some concerns, but I feel I have an obligation to see it through, to see how it could possibly benefit us financially before making a final decision. But in order for me to make that final decision, I will need all of that information that has been requested.
I want to comment about the billboards. I'm really disappointed in the billboard presentation. They came here and they didn't answer any questions. So it makes it hard for us to get some of the answers that we need to have. And saying that it would be between $2 and $5 million is a big span, and then saying that there's public information available, but they can't give it to you. What did they come up here for?
To tell you to the public that we got $2 to $5 million from a company that's the largest company in the country over 20 years. Okay, so that's why, so it doesn't say when I say it, just like if you remember during the hotel zone conversation, we knew that there was supposedly, allegedly, people who wanted to build a hotel on Route 4, so we passed the zoning. But no one ever came forward to say, "Hey, we want to put a hotel on Route 4." So before we pass another ordinance saying that we want a billboard, let's see if there's some kind of interest by people who are going to pay the money, not just rumor and innuendo that people say that, "Okay, look, if you pass a hotel ordinance, somebody's going to put a hotel here." So I think the presentation did do what it was supposed to do, it was supposed to tell us exactly what the number was, and they gave us a range. Now we do our work and figure out, okay, what are they sending on Atlantic City Expressway? What are they doing on Route 4? We'll find out the rest of it, form a subcommittee, look at the traffic study, look at the economic impact, and then look at every question that we want to say, and then make a decision saying, "Hey, do we want to turn down this money or not turn down this money?" That's, that's the question that I think we have to answer. Do you have an, anyone else?
I was going to move to consent agenda.
We got to go to the budget after that. You had a budget question? Remember I said we were going back to the budget?
Oh, I thought we were going to do it at, okay.
Yeah, just a few questions. I want to address, Mr. Rose made a comment that, you know, why would I disagree with the chief on cars? Do I have better knowledge? And sort of like, your question of how dare I disagree with my professional, and I would say that I hold Chief Wilson in the highest professional regard, I think he's an excellent police chief, I think he's made some significant changes in our police department, the management of our staff, that has not only improved the quality of law enforcement in town, but reduced our exposure to employee-related litigation and things like that. I think he's done a phenomenal job as a, as a police chief. All of that being said, police chiefs don't get the checkbook for a reason. Police chief is not elected. And so when it comes time to make financial decisions, we have professionals in every department in town that are excellent at what they do. But ultimately, it's the decision of council whether or not to spend dollars. And it's exactly why council is here, to listen to the chief, to listen to the manager, to take their professional opinions into account, and then decide whether or not I'm going to go into your pocket to take the money to pay for it. And so I think the question of whether I disagree with the chief, on this issue, yes. On the mechanics of law enforcement, almost never. I would say never. As far as Mr. Vatsky's concerned about whether we need a billboard, we wouldn't need a billboard if council weren't asleep at the switch. Mr. Vatsky, again, time and time again, refers to legal bills and bad decisions that were made by this council, legal judgments from lawsuits from employees and all the money that has incurred through poor management. And I just want to say again that the fact patterns in those cases were established when many of us were in high school, that the decisions that were made in so many regards as far as self-insurance and opening the town up to liability and things that have cost us over the decades, were decisions that were made long before my tenure on council and certainly most of my colleagues. And as far as Ms. Turner's specific question about content on the billboard, that was a question that I specifically asked as well, and I think it's essential that when we look at the financial impact, the environmental impact, the traffic or safety impact, we also have to look at the, at the content as well. It's something that we can have say in, in terms of what is allowed or what is disallowed as far as content, when we, you know, should we put this out to bid? We can restrain that. Now, obviously, the more we restrict it, maybe the fewer bidders, the fewer revenue the project can generate, but I think that there's certainly reasonable content guidelines that we should be, should be concerned with. And then I want to address Mr. Castle's Oprah request. And, you know, he made it, made it seem pretty clear that this was a request made in January, and now we're in March, so it seems like it's three months, but it's really 32 days because it was on January 31st, and today's only March 4th. And so we look at, you know, whether this is genuine or disingenuous, and I'm actually going to read the request that was submitted to us, because I want, I want the public to understand what was, what was requested. So this is an official Oprah request for the following. A, electronic copies of the mayor and council, manager and attorney, both 412 and 612 financial disclosures. Electronic copies of communications, including but not limited to email or text messages to or from council members Katz, Stern, Gussen, or Schwartz, or manager Browton, and Governor Christie, his chief of staff, deputy chiefs of staff, other office staff, or scheduler regarding or related to his visit to TNEC on September 2nd, 2013, from January 1st, 2013 through September 15th, 2013. Part C, electronic communications, including but not limited to email or text messages to or from council members Katz, Stern, Gussen, Schwartz, or manager Browton, and lieutenant governor Kim, and I always bungle her name, Goddagnow?
Goddano.
Goddano. Her chief of staff, deputy chiefs of staff, other office staff, or scheduler regarding or related to her visit to TNEC on August 22nd, 2013, from January 1st, 2013 to September 15th, 2013. Part D, electronic copies of communications, including but not limited to email or text messages to or from council members Katz, Stern, Gussen, or Schwartz, regarding, what was this? I'm sorry. Regarding, related to the preparation of the 2014 budget from January 1st, 2013 to December 31st, 2013. Electronic copies of communications, including but not limited to email or text messages to or from council members Katz, Stern, Gussen, Schwartz, or manager Browton regarding or related to Ethical Culture Society, TNEC 2020, Barbara Toffler, Jason Castle, Charles Chuck Powers, from January 1st, 2013 to December 2000, ah, December 31st, 2013. So we're looking at like eight different subjects across an entire year of communications amongst Katz, Stern, Gussen, and Schwartz, not all of council, just four very specific council members, that literally generated thousands and thousands of pages. I spent hours and hours searching my email accounts, searching through all text messages, searching through every bit of documentation, and I think that for you to stand here and say that this is a simple request that could be available immediately is so disingenuous it's laughable. Now, the law says you're entitled to all of this, and I think it's essential that you get what you're entitled to when you request these documents in the timeless... you're entitled to when you, when you request these documents in the, in the timeless fashion possible. Uh, so I would urge the, the clerk and the attorney to, to, you know, go through the review of those documents to ensure that things are properly and appropriately redacted and, and reviewed as, as the law sets forth. Um, but please, make sure Mr. Castle gets all the documents he wants regarding Councilman Stern, Katz, Schwartz, and Gussen.
Excuse me. Thank you. Excuse me.
That's not even the full Oprah.
There's plenty more.
Which is what? Point one and two? I mean, there's seven other points that you can go in there. I, I got the point, and I think the residents got the point. Yeah.
Okay. Uh, if we could move on back to, we did have some stuff to finish up on the budget before the consent agenda. Councilman Parker, do you have a question?
Yeah, I just had a question, um, for the, um, the fire chief. Uh, I believe Councilman Katz had asked for a breakdown of the calls that FDU gets. Um, and we don't get anything back in terms of revenue for every time a firefight, fire truck goes to FDU. And a couple of years back, we explored a usage fee. Um, and I'd love to see us explore that again. Um, other municipalities, uh, universities and other municipalities lobbied and it never moved anywhere. But, I mean...
Was that about two or three years ago? There was state legislation? Was it three years ago?
It was further. It was probably four years ago. Four or five years ago.
I agree. I agree with you. Just, but let me, before we say the usage fee, I just want, did they donate this year? What was the donations from FDU this year?
We didn't get anything this year.
No, they gave it to us, but they might've gave it directly to police and fire, which is...
But also, you don't have to even go as far as the usage fee right away. You know, just like when the police department responds to our house for multiple false alarms.
There's a charge.
There's a charge after multiple false alarms. And, and the fire chief presented that, I don't remember the number, but it was, it was excessive of multiple false alarms. You know, so start with that portion. Give them X amount of free fire calls.
Okay. How do you guys want to do this? Do you want to talk to them first? Or do you just want to put it on like we did with the, if you want to just give it to them? Next thing you know, they look at that water usage fee and then they're like, where did this come from? Because I'm going to get the call, not you.
If you're going to get the call, you'll...
I'm going to get the call. So feel free to...
We have not, I, I, at least I haven't, met with the new president at FDU. And I know that they have been generous to us, especially with the youth advisory board. But I, I think that we need to convey our concerns to them.
So start with a letter.
Just, but to keep things in context, as generous as they've been with financial donations in the past, whether it was for, uh, equipment for the safety equipment for the police department, fire department, or supporting the youth advisory board, you know, it's issues of thousands of dollars versus issues of hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Yeah, it's not a recurring expense.
These are orders of magnitude difference.
Recurring revenue, but we have a recurring expense.
What we benefit from them and what they benefit from us.
Exactly. And so I think, yes, sure, we, we should sit down and talk with them and express our concerns. But I think this is something we should, um, we should explore.
Okay. William, can you contact them and ask them to set up a meeting?
I'm going to be on that subcommittee.
You do exactly my next one. Okay.
May I just have to accuse myself of this conversation because I teach at FDU, so...
Okay. Are you stepping off the stairs or just stepping off the...
Councilman Parker, what was the amount? Do you have the list of how many, um, MFAs we went there?
The MFAs were only four last year.
Four.
Four. But there's 72 responses.
Seventy-two calls. So they categorize them different.
When we look at the, when we look at sort of the, the generic per call cost, thousand dollars, closer to four thousand dollars.
I had a breakdown.
Yeah. See, it's closer to, you know, when we look at the, the total cost of operations, salary wages of the fire department across four thousand some odd calls a year, it costs about four thousand dollars every time a roll truck's to FDU. Um, times 70 something calls.
Two hundred thousand dollars.
It's a pretty significant number. It's like billboard money numbers.
Okay. So we're going to have a meeting.
And so, you know, these are, these are types of, of fruit that we can't just leave on the trees. These are things we really have to look at.
Who else do I have besides Ellie Katz?
Me.
Uh, Councilman Parker, and, um, I'll try to make myself available.
Okay. They'll call you.
They'll call me. Okay. So is there anything else on the budget?
That was the only item I tried to remember wanting to.
Okay. So we're agreed that, uh, we're going to be setting up a subcommittee to meet with FDU to talk about the false alarms and possibly charge them. Okay. Um, next item is the consent agenda. Would somebody like to move the consent agenda?
I'll move it. Um, everything except for the minutes, which I want at the table.
Uh, can we pull Resolution D as well?
D.
Diaz and David.
And the bill is in the amount of five million, 238,806 dollars and 29 cents. I just need a second.
Yes, with an exemption, uh, I mean, so with an extension on Bill List Item 1400790.
We didn't have the roll call yet.
I'm just jumping ahead. I don't know. I don't know. I'm just fired up.
Can we do that motion in one vote to table the minutes? Wait. Okay.
Yeah. So let's vote first to table the minutes.
Okay. Table the minutes.
Second.
Yeah. Hold on one second. Go ahead. Right now.
Resolution E.
For discussion. Okay. Roll call, please.
Okay. So this is, there's a motion?
Yeah. We're, we're voting to table the minutes.
Okay. Councilman Parker? Yes. Councilman Stern?
Yes.
Deputy Mary Gussen?
Yes.
Councilmember Pruitt?
Yes.
Councilmember Katz?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to move the rest of the consent agenda with the exception of Resolutions D like David and E like Edward.
I'd like to move it. I moved it first. Oh, sorry. You could second.
Then we'll amend your moving with removing D and E, and I'll second it.
Okay. It sounds good to me.
All right, guys. Come on. Let's go.
Councilmember, Councilmember Parker?
Yes.
Councilmember Stern?
Yes.
Deputy Mary Gussen?
Yes, again, with an, with an extension on Bill List Item 14-00790.
Okay. Councilmember Pruitt?
Yes.
Councilmember Katz?
Yes.
Councilmember Schwartz?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes. Resolution D? Do you want to...
Yeah. Resolution D is the resolution for, uh, the purchase of state vendor contract, uh, police vehicles. And, uh, I think the discussion we had before, uh, requires us to pull this and vote it separately. Uh, so I'd like to move Resolution D.
Is it required for us to vote on it at all?
Yeah, because it's a, it's a resolution here.
Can we table?
Can it be pulled? Pull it.
The motion's already made to vote it. We can vote it yes or no. And go there. Do I have a second to vote it?
Yes.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Parker? Um, I abstain. Councilmember Stern?
This is for what? For the, to the purchase of the six, please. No.
Deputy Mary Gussen?
No.
Councilmember Pruitt?
Three.
Yeah, that's...
It's a yes or, it's a yes or no vote.
That means no.
Councilmember Katz?
No.
Councilmember Schwartz? Mayor?
Yes.
Okay. I'd like to move Resolution E for the purpose of discussion.
Yeah, I asked about that. I'd like to, uh, have the manager.
I'd like the manager to, um, tell us something about why we picked that particular vendor for that particular job.
On Resolution E, I'm sorry. Is that, uh, this is the LSRP, uh, JM Sorghy. Is that that resolution? Yeah. Yeah. JM Sorghy is the, is the contractor that the Votey Park Environmental Advisory Board, uh, recommended to be the LSRP for Votey Park. Uh, and these are additional services, uh, that need to be provided. And the information was provided in a proposal in September of 2013, and they include things like the, uh, the well and, and other stuff that needed to be done in the park.
Okay. Mayor, just for clarification, oh, are we voting? I'm sorry. Let's vote on this and then I have a question. Sorry. Second. On Resolution E?
I, uh, no, we'll do the vote, but I have a, I want to, I need to say something.
On Resolution E or what else?
I want to clarify my vote.
On Resolution E?
No, on Resolution D.
Okay. You want to go ahead for the record or you want to do it after?
Well, there's a, there's a motion and a second. We need a roll call on Resolution E. It does make a difference.
That's the actual rules.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes.
Okay. For Resolution D, I was conflicted as to how I wanted to vote on it because, um, I, I feel a compromise should be made on this. And...
Do you want me to vote?
Yes, I do. I feel a compromise should be made on this resolution item. Um, my vote would have been no for six, but I would support, um, purchasing three cars. And I'd like to make a motion for us to purchase three cars.
Say. Yes.
Deputy Mary Gussen?
Yeah. Yeah. I just think he knew there was a motion. So if we can just table this until he gets back to the day of the day or something, we can do it again.
Would you, could we do that? Two more minutes?
I just want to take a recess.
Okay. Let's take a two-minute, uh, three-minute break.
8:30.
No one is going to be there.
I don't think we're giving them the impression that we're working with them.
You're talking about, I think, I don't think you're getting this in.
There's so much more on the street that would be horrible on the street than they are doing today.
Complete knockout voice. After the children, by all means, there's so much more that only there's hope.
I have a tag here.
They have all of them. But they have all of them inside. They have signs.
There were years that had Gary St. Jackson on the overdrive.
If we don't use any overtime, that means we have too many people. There's too many people that we have. Because that means that people cover every single shot and unforeseeable things.
We don't have ladies. We have ladies.
Let's, let's pull this back together again. I feel popular.
I feel popular. I love it.
I'm sorry. I was out of the room. Can we restate the vote? Because I, I didn't hear the proposed... Is there such a resolution?
Still have the motion.
Okay.
There's a second roll call.
To amend the motion or to create a, to amend the resolution or to create a new resolution? Do we have to read it into record? Do we have to open public input back up?
Because I think that, see, I don't, uh, when you do a resolution, correct me wrong, before they come on the council, before they come on the agenda, we have to have four nodding heads, and that's how we usually get them on unless they're walked in, and then we all agree, four people agree to get it on.
We should vote, vote the motion.
But this was first, this was, this was moved in second?
Yes.
Then there has to be a roll call, but, but I, I don't understand how, how it came about. I wasn't in the room. So could somebody fill me in?
I was explaining my vote and the fact that I was conflicted because I didn't support six vehicles, but I would support three. And so I made a motion to purchase three vehicles. And we have two affirmative votes. And you're next.
I guess, I guess, I guess it would have been more elegant to amend the original resolution first, have that vote. If it didn't carry them, vote without the amendment?
Nobody ever accused us of being elegant.
Okay.
Yes. Okay. So let's go on.
Okay. Councilmember Pruitt?
Yes.
Councilmember Katz?
No.
Councilmember Schwartz? Mayor?
No.
Are we done with the budget discussions and, and, and right now?
Yes.
Could I just ask, how did we leave it as far as our hiring freeze? I know that we went back and forth as far as we're hiring, what is the hire, was it hiring free?
I was explaining my vote, and the fact that I was conflicted because I didn't support six vehicles, but I would support three, and so I made a motion to purchase three vehicles. And we have two affirmative votes. And you're next.
I guess, I guess, I guess it would have been more elegant to amend the original resolution first, have that vote, if it didn't carry them, vote without the amendment?
Nobody ever accused us of being elegant.
Okay.
Yes.
No.
Okay, so, let's go on.
Okay, Councilman Pruitt?
Yes.
Councilman Katz? Councilman Schwartz? Mayor?
No.
And Mayor, just a clarification, sorry, are we done with the...
Are we done with the budget discussions and, and, and right now?
Yes.
Could I just ask, how did we leave it as far as our hiring freeze? I know that we went back and forth as far as we're hiring, what is the, was it hiring freeze, is it not adding positions, how did we leave it, do you remember?
I would be in support of not adding any additional positions that was not budgeted for last year. So park rangers, absolutely not.
Right.
The assistant building code person, no.
Yeah, so I think I had a different position, that I would support only hiring the recommended personnel for Department of Public Works, and not making any additional hires at all in police, fire, building, or, or the parks. So there was no vote, there was no clear consensus. I think ultimately it's something that, that we need to come to terms on. I think it's very clear, as we saw over the, the number of storms and the taxing of our DPW staff, that, that we are understaffed. We demand tremendous work, we get unbelievable output from our incredibly dedicated employees, but there's just not enough of them, and, and they can only be asked to work so many double shifts. I support augmenting our DPW staff, but I think our staffing levels in, in every other area is sufficient.
How many was that in the DPW?
I believe it was four positions in, in Public Works, but not to, not to make any other hires. So if I could, you know, I think that, to me, is the area where I think we have, you know...
But can you just clarify, so does that mean if a firefighter retires today, that means that we're not adding the firefighter?
Adding is the wrong word.
We're not replacing.
No, no, no. Yeah, well, you got, you have to paint a very specific picture.
Yeah, I just needed clarification on what, on what are we freezing, because...
2013 level.
So the firefighters will place if one retires. The chief, if he comes off the payroll, we put him to a new rookie deal.
Yeah. But the chief said that there was ninety-six authorized, how many did we have in, in 2013?
No, no, authorized, chief is a hundred and fifteen. And the... No, ninety-nine. We had, we were, in, in 2013, we were supposed to have ninety-six for the police department. We didn't get to ninety-six. I believe we had ninety-five, or, we had ninety-five. So we agreed to stay at the 2013 level of ninety-five, knowing that it's gonna take us at least a year to have a, a, a police officer.
So you're saying, i- i- if the chief said that we have eighty, how many did you say? Eighty-six?
About eighty-eight, I believe.
So that means that we're hiring seven more police officers?
No, no. We have, when we, when we say we have eighty-eight, he's talking about the number of officers that are either injured, out on some sort of leave. How many are we actually down from the ninety-five? I want, I want to... So we have ninety, we have ninety-three.
Ninety-three officers that are fit for service that actually...
No.
We have ninety-three officers that aren't payroll.
Yes.
Okay. How many officers are fit for service? And that's because of injury workers, you know? What, what?
So you're saying we're hiring two police officers?
How many they...
Yeah, I'm saying we're hiring none, no, no. I'm saying to stay at the 2013 level and hire those two police officers, which we can't do until August, so, okay?
You would still have ninety-five officers on payroll?
The following year.
Right, so you would still have ninety-five officers on payroll, which is what you had in 2013?
Yes.
Okay. So Councilman Katz, what would you like to see done?
I would like to see a hiring freeze, which means the employment applications get put in the drawer, and, you know, there's no payroll, the forms filled out, until, especially until we get through the entire budget process.
Attrition.
Okay, so just until, when the budget, then, then you want those attritions?
But we have to, if we're gonna hire someone in, in June, or July, or November, we have to budget for that now.
If we're gonna...
Hold on, hold on one second, let them finish. Hold on one second, please.
Well, that's, with that, we're still discussing that, though. We haven't finalized the discussion. That's what I'm trying to get out of the discussion now.
Okay, so you want a hiring freeze until the discussion?
I would like payroll and employment applications to be put in the drawer until we finalize the budget.
Are you asking for the money to be removed from the budget as well?
No, I think, I think what, what Councilman Katz is saying, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that in years past, we ran into a situation where council was not intent on funding a position, but because the position had existed, in the prior year's budget, manager at the time, not necessarily Mr. Browner, went ahead and filled the position that council was in the process of deliberating defunding. And so... Councilman Katz's concern is that if we're saying, hey, you know what, we're not gonna hire the park rangers, but let's say there were money available to the manager to hire park rangers, and the hire was made prior to our final deliberation of maybe defunding it, that we would like the manager not to make any hires until the end of the budgeting process, so that there's no backdooring of making a hire that then we're stuck with, that, and, and I think this, this happened with a, with a prior manager, where there was a matter of a deadline for, for a police academy, or a fire academy, and hires were made that council didn't necessarily want.
I second that motion.
Right, is that, is that what your concern is?
That's what you just said, right.
Okay.
But we've also had a higher increase in the drawer, and people were notified that we're getting hired.
Let me, let me, at least...
Yeah, so...
Let me state what I believe. Here, here's what I think we should do. We should have the same number of people in 2014 that we have in 2013. Now, if somebody leaves, then the manager has the authority to fill that position. But the number of people we have in 2013 should match the number of people we have in 2014. That's what I think the freeze should be.
And I'll move ahead beyond that.
I disagree completely.
Yeah, I disagree also. Because, you know, we don't even know what the level should be, and then, and then next year we get to the budget, whoever's sitting up here, then we're gonna start, oh, let's fire some...
It's 2014, by the way.
And let's fire some firefighters because we can't afford it, and, and it's like, it creates an environment of instability.
Yeah, but I, I think we do know what those numbers are. We have, we've decided, and we've discussed this for several years, what is an appropriate number for the police department? Ninety-six officers. We came to that decision. In the seventies, we only had, we had ninety-two in the seventies. Our calls have increased significantly, we are at a point where we can't have less officers. If we have ninety-six, we really don't have ninety-six. We have eighty-eight. It takes at least a year, or could be more, before we have a viable officer. Those positions have to be filled. I'm not going to fill those other positions we, we're talking about. I know the positions that we're talking about.
Much, much to his credit, you know, while, while Chief Wilson has been the chief, year after year, we've heard across the board, crime statistic numbers down. High single digits, double digits, year over year over year, with a staffing level that has gone from as high as, I think, a hundred and one, when I was first on council, to, to now, where we actually have, regardless of how many are on payroll, but we actually have eighty-eight officers functioning, enforcing law in TNEC, and we see year over year decreases, many double digits decreases in crime rates, that the chief stood here back in, in our budget overview, talking about how this category of crime is down, this category of crime, this category of crime is down, and that's done with eighty-eight officers.
Right, and, and just, can I...
I would say that if we're able to see improvements in the safety of TNEC, year over year, with a reducing number of officers, then I don't think I'm sold that ninety-six is the right number.
Mr. Dustin, you have to also understand this. It's not only the crime fact, it's also the safety of those officers that are working. Okay? So we need to maintain a certain number of officers.
For the next two weeks, I think that we have four people who did agree that we go from 2014 levels to twenty, to, or 2013.
Can I just say, by the way, first of all, this is not pick on the police department night, you mean, this is, I mean, the fire department, the same thing, nobody knows what the numbers are.
Let's wait a second, let's look at the fire department.
Let's go to the fire department, so what's the number?
For decades, we've had five uniform, the equivalent of five uniform firefighters answering phones and dispatches.
How many, how many do we have today?
Professional firefighters.
And if you want to, if you want to take this time to look at the table of organization and re-change the table, I'm all for that and make that discussion. But at ten twenty-five at night...
That's, that's my point about the freeze.
We have additional meetings, it's not a matter of what time the clock is on the wall.
No, it is the clock, because he just comes in.
But that's my point about the freeze. I agree that we should be deliberating a lot longer and, and not at ten twenty at night, but that's why I'm requesting that we have a freeze, all the applications stay in the drawer until we're able, council to decide.
Just up to 2013? We have four people who agree that it should stay at the 2013 levels for 2014. Myself, Councilman Schwartz, Councilman Pruitt, and...
So you're saying that if we have, I don't know how many we have in the fire department tonight?
Yeah, if we have ninety-six in 2013, we have ninety-six in 2014.
So if we have to hire, if, if, let's say there's only...
And if you go down for whatever reason, we have to hire more.
If there's only eighty-eight today, so the, the manager can go hire eight more firefighters?
Eight more, yes, absolutely.
Because it's budgeted for.
But because it's budgeted for doesn't mean we should spend it. And because a manager...
I'm concerned about the public safety of our residents. And I think that we should maintain at the 2013 levels, and we have four council members that agree to that. Do we need to take a vote? Because it's not going back and forth with this.
I think that, that's what...
First of all, there's no, no, no need for anybody to get frustrated, because this is a, this is...
I'm not getting frustrated.
No, I wasn't talking to you, I was talking to everybody. Because, you know, we've, we've decided that we're gonna make these things workshops, we're gonna merge the conversations with the regular working thing. So this is part of it. Unfortunately, it's at ten twenty-five at night. This is what we do at workshops, we communicate, we, we talk about our feelings, and then we decide how to move forward. My, my prob, my concern is that we should communicate and look at each department and see if that's the staffing level we want to continue.
We've danced around this for years, is that you need, we need to take a look at the table of organizations.
Right, so...
Okay, now, you can't gonna take a look at it, right, in this manner of saying, okay, you know what, I think we need two, I think we need to take away three. We need to take a holistic approach at this, and it's something that needs to be studied, and just because...
Are you suggesting we commission a study for our staffing levels in police and fire?
Absolutely, if I got a second, I've been saying that, yeah.
Can I say something, oh, Mr. Mayor? I, I think that this idea of studying restructuring the town's employment level can't happen between now and adoption of the budget.
You are a hundred percent right.
Let's go with 2013 in terms.
That's why I agreed with you on the, on the budget, but what you're saying is a hundred percent right. If you want to look forward at the staffing levels, then we have to look at it in a holistic approach, not just during budget season.
Just remember, there's sixty-six towns in Bergen County that will go to sleep tonight without a single paid firefighter, and every resident, and all of those towns are gonna wake up tomorrow.
So my suggestion, and, and I'll make it as a, as a motion, that for the next two weeks, we can, we can start this on, at an earlier time, we can have this discussion, looking at the different departments and the staffing level, and seeing if we want to fill it in. But we don't have to talk about it now, but for the next two weeks, we put the employment applications in the drawer.
I, I think we've, we've, I'm not in agreement with you, and I think that there's four people who have said that we want to keep it at the 2013 levels.
Who are the four people, right in the hand, to the O L?
Right there.
All right. That's, discussion is over.
Back to going to sleep at night, I slept through a fire call at four thirty this morning because I'm thirty years old and getting really tired, so let's, you know, I, I should be supportive, and you and I disagree on the, on the TNEC pay department. I'm gonna go to sleep tonight, knowing that it's their job not to sleep through the fire calls that I slept through last night, so I just wanted to point that out.
Okay, if we could just move on now, so nomination of board members, do we have any? Okay, do we have any committee, committee reports?
Uh, yes, the whole board, right.
Do we have any?
Yeah. What's with nomination of board members?
For which one?
What's with nomination of board members?
Which one? Yeah, so I'd like to...
Do we wanna...
Yeah, we want to reappoint all the members.
Reappoint all the members? I would move that. I mean, I, I would move that, we put that on the next, on the next agenda.
So Councilman Stewart is nominating all the people that are on the environmental advisory board for reappointment.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that up. Okay, committee reports, anyone? No? Okay. Council listed items, energy aggregation, Councilman Pruitt?
You know, we, we, we talk about budget, and there's an idea called energy aggregation that will save the taxpayers, individual taxpayers' money. The object is for all of the people in the township...
I'm sorry, Mr. Pruitt, we talked about this at the last meeting, and I thought we had suggested the manager go ahead and start looking at...
We, we, we do it, we gotta do it. We do it. We, we met with one set of people.
Oh, oh, I'm, I'm sorry, I thought we were just rehabbing.
No, no, we, we met, the manager and I, and, and Lloyd, met with one aggregation company. I think we need to meet with another two or three, and I'd like to invite other councilmen who want to sit in on that, before we come to the...
Yeah, well, let me just give you an update now, because I saw this on the agenda, I contacted our township attorney to say where we are. So there is gonna be a change in, in, you know, there's a discussion right now with the, the mayors of the major cities, as well as the League of Municipalities and the president of the New Jersey League of Mayors, Wayne Smith in Irvington, regarding how we participate in the energy aggregation. Because right now, as it seems, we can force the township to take one energy aggregate, but we can't participate by law, we're not allowed to, correct me if I'm wrong, Stanley, we're not allowed to do any kind of public-private partnership where we can split the savings with, with the energy aggregator. Correct? Okay. The municipality cannot gain any benefit. So within the next year, that is going to kind of change, and they're gonna relook at that in the legislature, I'm told, and the mayors around, around the state are gonna kind of move that forward. So I request that, you know, we reach out to the League of Municipalities, see where we are in that process. I'm gonna be talking to some mayors that I network in Bergen County, as well as in Hudson and Essex, to see how far they would like to push this, to see, before we make the decision, because I don't want us to be in a position where, oh, you know what, if you're already in a contract, then you can't get into a new contract.
Okay. One thing to it, we want the communities to know that we're looking at it.
Yes.
We're looking at it. We haven't got a decision, but we're looking.
So Mayor, on, on that note, we are, we can't make money off of energy aggregation, we can't make money off of our residents, Mr. Turris, is that correct? Though however, we can look, we can look if we want to, at any of our energy expenses, i.e. all the lighting in town?
Yes.
All, all, obviously all of our buildings, but also all of our lighting in town, which is a nice chunk of change, I don't know if it'll save money, but...
Let me, let me answer that, because we talked about it in our meeting. There are three levels of energy aggregation. There's the community residence, that's one set. There's a township municipal cost, is another set. And then there's a business piece, that's a third set. They're all different. They're all different. What I'm talking about is how the township residents can benefit from having aggregation for the, for the people who live here. And, and the good thing about it is, is the town adopts it, and somebody doesn't want to be part of it, it doesn't change anything in their bill, it just stays with P S E N G.
Okay. So we're looking forward and continue, but we're not making any decisions on that. Police and fire dispatch, Mr. Manager, where are we with that?
I provided the council with a report for, for council to review.
Yeah, we got it tonight, okay.
Yeah, you did, you did get it tonight.
All right, here's my question, is like, sometimes, like, you know, I see we have council listed items, I'd like this to stay on council listed items, and us to continue discussing it until this is done, because I want to get this, we've been talking about this for a couple of years now. So whether we're going with the county, or whether we're going and making the police and fire move together, I, I would like to see that done in a timely manner in 2014. Does everybody agree with that?
Very difficult to get responses.
In, in two thousand and seven, when we had a meeting in the library, a joint meeting with TNEC and Englewood, we said we were gonna have that done in two thousand and seven. You remember that meeting, we had former police, former, former fire chief of TNEC, we had Englewood's fire chief, a very well-attended meeting. We're gonna move forward with this in, in two thousand and seven.
Wasn't two thousand and seven?
Resistance from, from our departments, resistance from prior manager, resistance from bargaining units, whatever, whatever the issue is, there's been resistance that's been somehow magically insurmountable for, for something that, that seems pretty straightforward and, and simple, so, so I'd like to see this get done.
There is, there is, there hasn't been, since I've been here, there hasn't, I have received no resistance from the department.
Well, there's been no progress either.
Well, the problem is getting the information from the county, so it took us months to gather the information that we've gathered in that report, so it's not easy.
Okay, so we're gonna go over the report tonight, and then we'll be prepared to discuss which way we're gonna go for this. The pros and cons of taking our police and fire and merging them together versus going to the county. And Councilman Stewart, if I could nominate you to kind of blaze with us and kind of tell us, tell us, you know, what the capabilities of the county is.
I will, I will be happy to, I think, I think an important step in this process is for the council to schedule a trip as a council, and obviously I understand, Mr. Turris, this might have to be as a, as a, as an open meeting, notice to the public with the clerk there, and so on and so forth, for anybody, anybody in the public who might want to attend, I would, I would encourage the council to allow me to schedule a, a trip for the council up to the new dispatch center, have a look at it, and take a tour of the place. have a look at it, and take a tour of the place. Yeah, yes.
I was just asking, you know, we took a, you know, a trip up there a couple of years ago, and it's a beautiful place, great-looking place, you get no answers. It's like cricket, cricket. So make sure, if you go there, don't waste your time. Make sure you have somebody that can give you answers on the spot, because it took us over a year to get answers to some of this stuff.
If we could bring the, I'm sorry to interrupt. If we could bring the chief with us to that meeting, I think that that would be-
I'd rather not even go.
No, you just got, you just got volunteered.
I'm sorry if you ask me, but, but I'm, I'm very serious, man. I was, I was all gung-ho about it, and, you know, it is very impressive. The fire chief will tell you, it's, it's incredible. But you get no answers.
All right, that, that, I mean, that's-
Is it functioning as a dispatch center today?
Absolutely.
Yes.
Then how is it that there aren't answers available when we ask for questions about how they provide their services? They are providing services.
Well, they give us a price, you know, I say, well, they give us a price, they started eighteen dollars per capita, there's twenty. I say, well, I want low dice price.
Yeah.
I want to tell them what low dice price is. Because low dice got a special deal. I want, I want low dice price.
Should've told me you were coming up, you were getting answers.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But, but, but it's not a liberty to disclose, right?
Okay, so just, I think that there, and therein lies the discussion, is that if we're not getting the answer from the county, then it's not really a viable option. And in that case is, let's move on to option B, which is taking our police and our fire dispatches and moving them together with a timeline of what's it gonna be equipment-wise, with a timeline, what's it gonna be building-wise, where we're gonna put it, and let's get this done this year.
Or also convenient IR.
Can I request, though, maybe we can send a letter to the county executive, asking her to please allocate the proper resources to meet us at that meeting.
Absolutely. I, I agree with you. I don't know if we're gonna get it, but I agree with you.
To allocate or stop talking about how it's free and it's great when they're responding. So Councilman Stewart, you're gonna ring, how about we all go to a freehold?
You'll get it, you'll get it.
How about we all go to a freehold at the meeting?
I have that many check powers, but you don't have to go to a freehold.
You'll get it.
Okay.
All right, how we doing?
Okay, so the next thing is municipal court security. This is something, again, we discussed last year at a couple of different times, about looking at, uh, I think it's called, uh, special officers to take over the court security. Where are we with that?
Um, at previous meetings, uh, we had discussions, and we, we talked about whether or not we would do SLEO ones or SLEO twos.
Okay.
Uh, I believe our recommendation was for SLEO ones. If I'm correct, Chief, uh, SLEO ones unarmed officers.
For the court?
Yeah, for, yeah, SLEO one.
My, I, I don't know the difference. I would like an armed officer for court.
I thought we had an obligation to have an armed officer at the magistrates.
Well, we still would have armed officers in, in the court. But we thought it would be best to use a SLEO one, because you could have an unarmed position.
So you'd have one armed and one unarmed?
So we'd have, my whole position, my position on that is, is so that the police officers who are here, that the state mandated that we have to have three police officers here, are back out, whether they're at TNEC headquarters, or they're out on the road. So the guys who are protecting the judge could be retired police officers who are licensed to carry. That's what I would like to see done. Does everybody else agree with that? Okay, and we can start that process now, and we can set a deadline and get this implemented by 2015, whatever happens.
That would be, that's special twos.
Those are special twos.
Right? So you have the entire court security done by special twos?
Yes.
No full police officer?
No police officers in the court.
Does the state, does the state permit that?
Yes.
Well, they're not supposed to take the, they're not supposed to replace, uh, existing officers. So we could run into a conflict with that. And I believe that's in the statute.
If we could have our labor council take a look at that and give us opinion.
Hire one full-time police officer or a SLEO two per department. And then you can hire as many other ones part-time, but they cannot be used to replace police officers.
What is it, what is that mean?
Yeah, can we have labor-
Replace in a particular role, or replace in total headcount numbers? Like, what does that number mean?
Headcount numbers is where you can't, you know, stand apart.
If we can just have labor council give us an opinion on what we can do. Stanley, I think that you have an understanding of what I want to do. I would like all three to be, uh, SLEO twos, licensed armed police officers. Okay. And I'd like to see, you know, put this on the council listed items, stay on this, you know, like police and fire dispatch listed for a second time, municipal court security listed for a second time, continuing until it's resolved. Okay, township managers' report?
I had an item that was supposed to be added. Um, potholes and, and road, road repair. I'm sure many of us have been getting emails, phone calls about, um, all the potholes around town. I just want to know if the township has a plan as to how, um, we're gonna-
On that same subject, I don't know, it was in the record today. I think it's, uh, I think it was Ridgewood, where they created an app for residents to be able to, to report.
To report them, yeah.
Report potholes and things like that. And I think, uh, if we could, I mean, first off, talk about Councilman Parker's question of how we're dealing with the ones we have now that, that, you know, are known about. But if we can, if we can have someone reach out to Ridgewood to find out about their app, if it's something that they were gonna be able to share or, uh, loan, or guide us on how to do it ourselves. Uh, but that, that ability, you know, I think it, it, you know, serves some sort of function, uh, like, you know, SLEO one-one, like this, uh, where, you know, where someone may not have access to the, uh, to the website fully, or, or, you know, whatever, whatever the issue is. I just want to see what Ridgewood's really doing. The article was kinda, you know, sparse on details. Um, but, but if there's some way we can improve the ability or, or, uh, speed with which residents can report potholes, make it easier for them, because obviously, we don't go out driving a hundred and twenty miles of road every day expecting for potholes.
So every, every day possible, weather permitting, uh, we put out pothole crews. Uh, in January, we filled seventy-three potholes, six point seven nine tons of asphalt. February, a hundred and twenty-one, uh, potholes, uh, seven and a half tons of asphalt. We're out there every day filling potholes. Police report potholes, DPW report potholes. I don't think we have an issue of finding out where the potholes are. I think we know where they're at. It, it's just keeping up with them and, and getting them filled. But we're out there. Uh, this is something that occurs usually every season.
On Route Four, every day there's a different pothole. One day, the traffic is really bad going west. Um, and then the next day, I saw some of those potholes were fixed,